Welcome everyone, good evening. It is Tuesday, April 12th, the appointed hour of 6:00 PM. And I have two council members that are not with us today. Paul is in town and may be here later. He's had a bit of an issue at home. And Gary is in California, so he won't be making it to the meeting tonight. So we'll move on through the agenda. The first and second items on the agenda tonight were the prayer and pledge. We'll have chapel and change hours leading us in prayer. And Bob, if you will lead us into the bunch of the lead.
Please pray. Father God, we thank you for this time. We thank you for the counsel of the government that you have ordained over us. We respect those that you have in service here. And thank you for your service to us and our communities. All those in attendance, that you have blessed their time here, that you have blessed their families and those they represent. Just thank you for all that you do for us. And pray that your wisdom and your guidance will be of use in your name.
My allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Bob. Mr. Black, would you ever read the Freedom of Information Act? Thank you. Item number four is the approval of the agenda. I have a motion in a second to approve the agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
Yes, I wanted to recognize Mr. Smith of our elders. Quick on the draw. Mr. Smith?
Mayor, I would ask if we could move the fish market item up to the top of the item of finding new business.
Can you tell me the item on the agenda that we're moving? Not to put you on the spot.
Yes, that's all right. Under nine C on the development item number one.
Alrighty.
Nine C one.
Nine C one now will be moved under new business people plans. Thank you. I'll need a motion on the agenda. No changes? I have a motion to rehearse second. I have a motion in second to amend the agenda. If required, a two-person vote. All in favor? Aye. Close. And the ayes have it. Moving right into public hearings and awards and presentations.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmembers, ladies and gentlemen, good evening. Our first item of the public hearing is awards and presentations as the days of remembrance proclamation. Brad Breslin, if you would come forward please, sir. And a little Steve Shirley and Bridget, if you want to go over it as well.
I will go ahead and read the proclamation. Whereas the Holocaust was a state-sponsored systematic persecution and annihilation of European Jewry by Nazi Germany and its collaborators between 1933 and 1945, Jews were the primary victims. Six million of whom were murdered. Gypsies, the handicapped, and Poles were also targeted for destruction or decimation for racial, ethnic, or national reasons. Millions more, including homosexuals, Jehovah's Witnesses, Soviet prisoners of war, and political dissidents, also suffered grievous oppression and death under Nazi tyranny. Whereas the history of the Holocaust offers an opportunity to reflect on the moral responsibilities of individuals, societies, and governments. And whereas we, the people of Mount Pleasant, should always remember the terrible events of the Holocaust and remain vigilant against hatred, persecution, and tyranny. Whereas we, the people of Mount Pleasant, should actively rededicate ourselves to the principles of individual freedom and a just society. And whereas the days of remembrance have been set aside for the people of Mount Pleasant to remember the victims of the Holocaust, as well as to reflect on the deeds of respect of all peoples. And whereas pursuant to an act of Congress, the United States Holocaust Memorial Council designates the days of remembrance of the victims of the Holocaust to be Sunday, May 1st through May 8th, 2016, including the day of remembrance known as Yom Shul, Thursday, May 5th, 2016. Now therefore, I, through the page of Mount Pleasant, hereby proclaim the week of Sunday, May 1st through Sunday, May 8th, 2016, as days of remembrance in memory of the victims of the Holocaust. And in honor of the survivors, as well as the rescuers and liberators, and further proclaim that we, as citizens of Mount Pleasant, should promote integrity and confront hate whenever and wherever it occurs. And I encourage you to join the community in remembering the victims during the community-wide Yom Shul commemoration on the evening of Wednesday, May 4th at the Hall of the Dog, Beth Van Leeuwen, 90 Hassel Street, Charleston, South Carolina. Thank you.
We are gathered here today to remember the victims of the greatest crime of man against man. The young, the old, the innocent, the million and a half children who were starved, shot, given lethal injections, gassed, and burnt, and turned to ash because they were deemed guilty of the crime of being different. We remember what happens when hate takes hold of the human heart and turns it to stone. What happens when victims cry for help and there is no one listening? What happens when humanity fails to recognize that those who are not in our image are nonetheless in God's image? We remember to pray tribute to the survivors who bore witness to what happened and to the victims who were robbed of their lives. And we make sure that they should also not be robbed of their deaths. We remember to give thanks for the righteousness of the nations who save many lives, often at the risk of their own lives, teaching us how in the darkest of night we can light a candle of hope. Today, we call on your mighty God to help us hear your voice that says in every generation, "Do not murder. Do not stand idly by the blood of your neighbor, and do not oppress the stranger." We know that whilst we do not have the ability to change the past, we can change the future. And whilst we cannot bring back the dead, we can ensure that their memories live on and that their deaths were not in vain. So on this day, we commit ourselves to one simple act: to remember.
Could you light the candles in remembrance? Do you like candles to remember our families and all of our brothers and sisters?
Mayor Page, councilmembers, next on the agenda are the longevity awards. We have two. Deputy Chief Craig, please.
Sonya.
Eric, you want some?
Twenty years ago, in April of 96, we had a very good portion of hiring. Yeah, Johnson has become one of our telecommunicators. And she served in that capacity for a year. And understanding that communications is a very, very important part of what we do. It is our lifeline between y'all and us. And in the next year, 1997, she decided she wanted to go a different route with her career and became a community service officer. Y'all probably seen her out there directing traffic, working your regs, taking your reports. And she has proudly served the department in that capacity ever since 1997. She serves as filling in a records department and does so without complaint. She is one of our stellar employees, and we hope to have many more years with her. Recognize her for 20 years of service, Sonya Johnson.
Could you be Jan, if you could, join us up here? We've been very fortunate in the mixed trade services department to have Jan with us for 25 years. She started out leaving our financial division and in 2007 became our deputy, my deputy, which I'm very fortunate to have. She has twice filled in as interim CFO, and I'm glad she didn't want to keep the job. But I'm glad she's still with me. She's valuable, very valuable to the department. Her knowledge and the stuff she brings is just tremendous. So thank you. And if you do want to know, she does know where pies are buried.
Mayor, councilmembers, ladies and gentlemen, it's proud to introduce Ms. Catherine. She's going to go ahead and recognize the two of her staff members for some awards that we want. Ms. Catherine.
I'd like to start by just having Ashley Richardson come up. Ashley Richardson, she leads our cultural affairs and tourism office, which we affectionately call the CAT Office. Last month, the cultural affairs and tourism office was awarded a Spark Award. And Spark, 2016 Spark Awards are given by the Charleston chapter of the American Marketing Association. This award is given to the most innovative marketing and public relations professionals in the industry. And we're excited that CAT won in the category Best Mobile App for the experience Mount Pleasant app. So if you don't have it, take out your phone and download it right now. It's our tourism app, and it has restaurants, event venues, things going on around that. It's great. And they also received, they were finalists in best copyrighting for the Mount Pleasant Visitors Guide, which is absolutely beautiful. If you ever have company in town, you need to have one. So we wanted to recognize Ashley's office and say congratulations for being winners of the 2016 Spark Awards. And then shake hands if you have any hands. And before you all sit down, we had an announcement last week for Martine's office. So Martine, I want to recognize you. Martine should be familiar to many of you. She is our rock star, and she leads our communications office. And she is responsible for some of the really cool videos that have been coming out lately on top of everything else that her office does. And last week, we were notified that we won several awards at several different levels. They were given the Hermes Creative Award. And this is an international organization. And the Hermes Creative Award is administered by the Association of Marketing and Communication Professionals. It's an international organization, and there's over 6,000 entries submitted last year. And this is Fortune 500 companies up against governmental entities. And let me, I have to get my list out to tell you what we've won. Most exciting is if any of y'all have seen the 2015 Say the Town address, we won platinum. About 15% of entries received this graded level. So congratulations, platinum is the last one. Additionally, the town administrators e-brief won gold, and that's in collaboration with Lauren Sims. Where is this Lauren? Lauren, come on, come on down.
Yeah, come on over.
Come on down. Oh, way in the back. Come on up, Lauren.
You're not getting off the hook.
Lauren does a lot of legwork to make this monthly e-brief. If y'all aren't signed up for it, it's such a right way to get information from the town. And we won gold for the e-newsletter. Additionally, we won honorable mention for our Quick Fact Fridays musical legends. And that's the Quick Fact Fridays with the Historical Commission, correct? So bringing in the planning department and our wonderful Historical Commission. Also, How to Avoid Kitchen Burns. I'm assuming that's fire. And finally, The Journey, the Cinema Fire Series, which was absolutely amazing. So look for these. You can see them on our YouTube channel, all these videos, and many great things to come. So congratulations for all those awards and all the awesome work today.
Congratulations. Lastly, we have our employee of the month. Diana Gray, would you come forward? Mayor Page, councilmembers, Director Ray. Ladies and gentlemen, Diana is being recognized for her work with the Jones Center 25-year anniversary celebration. Many of you know the Jones Center, it's 25 years old. And you also know the impact that it's had on citizens of Mount Pleasant for all of these years. So it was a committee put together to help organize the event. And the event was a great success. It was almost 1,000 people and, you know, arts and crafts and those, you know, floating things that blow up that kids jump around. And, you know, skating performances and all kinds of stuff. It was a big event, very successful, a lot of logistics put into it. There was a committee, many of which the members of that committee are on the committee, please. Thank you so much. And Diana was recognized, and she was recommended for this award by the members of the committee because of her extraordinary work in organizing the event. She was the go-to person, the point person. I know you were in contact with the food vendors. You helped organize the brunch and the ribbon cutting. And in general, for all the concerns that day, you were the person that helped to organize. I know you handled parking, staff assignment, this is what it is. For making it such a special day and for representing the Recreation Department, so the council, you are a great one.
Definitely my favorite part of the evening, so I want... So item number six on the agenda is the approval of the minutes for the March 23rd and the March 31st, 2016, special town council meetings. The March 8th, 2016 town council meeting, and the March 2016 financial statement. I have two motions. One could change for a second. Thank you. I have a motion and a second. Any additions, questions, other conversation? All in favor? Aye. Aye. And the ayes have it. Correspondents and public statements. This is a time for the community to come and speak, and I believe we have several people signed up to speak.
Mr. Correctman, the first is Sean Barnes.
Sean, welcome to the council chambers. If you state your name and address for the record, we'll give you two minutes to address the council.
Yes, my name is Sean Barnes, and I live in Indian Village. And my concerns of the day have been for probably two or three years is the speeding on McCants and Sinister and also the side streets. It has increased. I've looked into the town, and I appreciate all the help about how to get speed bumps. And it just takes forever. I mean, I can understand people want to do what they want to do with their property on Coleman Boulevard. But we didn't ask for that in the back. I'm not asking, you know, I don't want to get into that. What I want to do is I want to save some lives. Because I've walked Sinister Street and McCants all different times. When people walk their dogs, ride a bicycle, or whatever they do, they ride it on that little small sidewalk, see? Because everybody's scared to step out there. And we can't, you know, believe that the cops are going to be out there every time because we know with all these new people that we have that we have to worry about crime. So we need to go ahead and take some of our money and put some speed bumps and some stop signs. You know, and we talk about this all the time. People are like, "Oh, yeah, somebody's going to die." And I know that we take it in light with our ears, but we need to do something. We have enough money that we can do something. We ought to do that first before you start finishing up Coleman. Because when you do that, nobody wants to go down Coleman anyway. They want to go down these two streets. And if you can't see that, then we need some help for some people. You know, and I appreciate your time, and I'm, but I mean, I don't know what else to do. You can't even buy a speed bump if you have the town put it in. Because I went to some people in Columbia, and they said, "Y'all keep saying, they keep saying DOT, DOT." DOT says they don't really care, as long as the Mount Pleasant doesn't care. So where are we? Is that a law that you can't buy a speed bump if you get the town to put it in? Does anybody know that? I can't get an answer on that.
Thank you, Sean. I appreciate your honesty.
Thank you. You all have a great night.
How are y'all doing? 1216 Decoy Court. I don't have a concern, I just want to tell you something I'm excited about. In front of each one of y'all's desks, you got this right here? This young lady right here, we need more people like her working for the town of Mount Pleasant. This Cory Paveka. And she came from Ohio. And we were talking to her about custom publishing, about doing some things. I'm extremely proud to do it for Mount Pleasant. Ken liked it. She's a, we need more people that will think out of the box. More leaders like Ken that will let people do what they need to do. And that Phil held back. I spoke to Ken about her at one of your breakfasts, Linda. And he said, "I'd much rather have somebody that got to pull back a little bit than somebody that doesn't get it done." So it's because of this employee, a team member of the town of Mount Pleasant, and she hooked up with me. And I can't tell you all, I'm just, I'm just here to tell you that I'm excited to do this for the town. And I wish more people like her were working for Coleman.
Thank you, Bill. Yes, this magazine right here is the Recreation Department's magazine. It's called In Motion. And the term "in motion" is more than just, it's more than a magazine, it's a mindset. Recreation can steer one person, it can steer a community, and a whole nation in motion. And I'm hoping that this will encourage people to check out all of the rec houses to offer and stay active and in motion, and let's keep the town of Mount Pleasant in motion. Thank you.
Barry Wolf.
My name is Barry Wolf, 1468 Oklahoma, in the Indian Village as well. And I want to thank the staff for all they do. And I hate to throw a wet blanket on all the happy. As far as I know, Mount Pleasant is still a part of the United States. And I believe that the United States is still a democracy, although, you know, we can argue the point. In a democracy, officials are elected to serve the citizens and do their best to represent the will and wishes of the people that elected them as a body. A funny, or frankly, not-so-funny thing happened in November when the citizens of Mount Pleasant went to the polls and sent a loud and clear message to the council. Some of you decided it didn't work that way here anymore. And decided to willfully and in some way spitefully ignore the message you were sent. If somebody didn't vote, they don't have the right to complain. I really get angry when members of this body want to downplay the elections in November. I don't care if 2,000, 5,000, 12,000, or 20,000 people voted. And I certainly don't care how many of them would be called creakers, as some of them have been called. The results are the same. The message didn't change. I applaud the initiatives put forth by Councilman Bustos today. Listen to the citizens. We're tired of the runaway development that has been fueled by previous administrations and embraced by some on this council. Slow it down. Shorten it up. Live by the spirit of the comp plan when it comes to ADUs. If the town has regulations, make sure they have the resources to enforce them. Understand the impact the 6,000 housing units approved in the pipeline will have on an already struggling infrastructure.
Thank you, Barry.
Before we approve more. Listen to the people.
Richard Towns, 303 Mallard Court. First of all, I'd like to tell all of you how much I appreciate all the great work and dedication that you have to what you're doing. I know many times it's thankless, and the staff is working very hard, and we all really appreciate it. I just really have a couple of questions. I wanted to pose it because I know that you all, as the staff and council, worked very hard on this. Six months ago, a growth management plan was passed, Mayor. And I know that you all worked very hard seven months prior to that, okay? And a lot of dedication in terms of... I'm curious, where are we now on the goals that were set in that plan? Six months later.
Richard Towns, this is just your time to address us. This is not questioning.
I fully understand. But I have, obviously, I'm just, these are the pieces that I'm just wanting to pitch to you because I'm curious about it. And then with that, six months in retrospect, you look at this and what's going on with the town and some of the frustrations this year. Where do you see other goals that need to be in place, voted upon, and worked by the staff again for the future? Okay, to help do some of the things that you established with your first growth management plan? So here we are. I know that you worked on it for at least seven months before, and I'm really curious... I know that you worked on it for at least seven months before, and I'm really curious about where you stand right now on it and what you expect to accomplish in the future, what we need to do in the future, because I think that's really what we're looking for as citizens. Thank you.
Chris Keel.
Chris Kyle, 1426 South Tenny's Court, and owner of Chris's Drive-Thru-808 Coleman Boulevard. I'm here again to speak against the raised median in front of my business and down John Roy's where the roundabout is. I want to thank Jerry Santos, Jim Owen, Sheryl Hany, and Joe Bustos for their support of me against that. Eldon, I sent you many letters and emails since 2011 up till now, and I've asked for your response and got none. I asked you two town council meetings ago why you did not respond, and you said, quote, "There was nothing to respond to." I don't understand that. Why should you hold this position if you can't respond to the citizens and the taxpayers and the businesses? Maybe someone else that's younger and is able to respond appropriately in a timely fashion is better suited from your seat. Mark Smith, I sent you an email on October 28, 2015, on another subject and got no response. You showed up at my business in the morning of December 14, 2015, and said, "I have been riding around with this since then, 47 days." On Tuesday, December 22, at 11:52 a.m., you sent me an email confirming that you had been there to converse with me face-to-face. But also, on that December 14, after we got over the other subject, I brought up the raised median in front of me, and, quote, "You said you did not like the idea of a raised median out in front of me." Quote, "I would not want one in front of my funeral homes." So, at the end, you said you were against the raised median. I don't know why you didn't tell the truth about the raised median as being in favor or against. You could have faced me like a man, and been a man of your word, and you weren't, and you turned your back on me.
Thank you, Chris.
But remember, the truth will set you free. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. That's all we have signed up to speak. Is there anyone else here that would like to address this body? Thank you.
I signed up for one, yes, I'm not...
Well, we moved the fish market, so that's why I ask. I know there are several people here, and if you came in late, you didn't move the agenda out of the fish market.
My name is Ryle Fitz. I live at 704 Hopkald Bluff Drive. I also own Mount Pleasant Seafood with my family at One Seafood Drive on Sherwood Creek. I thank you for your time, and thank you, your families, for your time. They serve as supportive of you, and we appreciate what you do. I came to speak about the item for the seafood market on the agenda. This was brought to my attention several weeks ago by Councilman Smith and by Commissioner John Byrne that came to see me and presented a proposal for a Saturday morning only seafood market in the vicinity of the waterfront park. The initial reaction I had to that was that it would remove all the selling from the highways, roadways, and parking lots. So, I immediately told Councilman Smith that I thought that that was a good proposal. So, he gave that information to his committee that Ryle Fitz was behind this, so he was 100% accurate what I initially said for the initial proposal. But since then, I have decided I was wrong. I am not in favor of a seafood market in the Mount Pleasant area, because we already have seafood markets that are longstanding seafood markets, Simmons Seafood, Mount Pleasant Seafood, other seafood markets on Sherwood Creek and around Sherwood Creek and other areas. The town does not need to sponsor a seafood market in our area. I ask you not to approve this tonight.
Thank you, Rob. If you'd just step forward as your time is, and you can address us for two minutes, please state your name and address.
My name is Reverend Richard Harkness. Please excuse my voice. 342 Old South Lane, Mount Pleasant. Here on behalf of my church, Olive Branch Amy Church and Johnson Development. We've been working with them for well over a year now, working on a land swap in order to help them with their development. And I'm just here to speak in favor of approval going forward with that. Some of the changes that will take place will be beneficial to the church, and we have a good positive working relationship, and I just wanted to make sure that the council knew. We've also sent a letter in support of this project as well. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Reverend.
Hello, I'm Lyra Snyder Richardson, 2755 Johnson Lane. I'm also here to talk about the Johnson Development on Highway 17 North, and as a part of that, I know there's a red light that's going to be in front of, I believe, Mattress America, and that's going to impact my mother's and my brother's driveway there. Also, like I said before, the way it's lining up is almost as if there are plans to connect Homeneck to 17 in that process, because truck is coming through her yard now to leave from one mattress store to get to the other, and once you put that barrier across by the AT&amp;T shop, it's going to create a huge problem for us and the children and the safety. Over the last month, we have had rainwater breaks because cars have been coming through at a higher rate of speed, and I have erected two fences, a front gate and a back gate. The back gate will be locked at all times, because this is a private drive, and as I stated before, this is not we've-a-circle, this is a private drive with 1767A and 1767B. We are not in the Town of Mount Pleasant, we are in Sutter County, we have no representation on your board, and it's just the overdevelopment and the squeezing our area out, the black families that are in this area. And like we said, we cannot handle that type of truck coming through that area. And, you know, they're saying you can't see the forest for the trees. Well, there's no trees to see anymore in Mount Pleasant, because you're cutting everything down and creating urban deserts. So, your overdevelopment is destroying the way of life for the people that love this town, that want to stay in this town, and that actually have homes, not houses, homes that have been here for four, five, six generations. Please slow down your development, because you're destroying this town.
Thank you.
Good evening, Council. Rich S.T., 1300 Athlin Drive. The part I wanted to come to you tonight about was item number five, I think, of new business about the moratorium on multifamily housing. And I have the pleasure of serving on Mount Pleasant's Affordable Housing Task Force, and even in current conditions, you know, implementing affordable and workforce housing is no easy task to do. The deck is really stacked against us already, so... And all I wanted to bring tonight to you was, you know, right or wrong, or good or bad about this particular motion, please consider affordable and workforce housing. Multifamily zoning and multifamily housing is becoming maybe the only way to get affordable and workforce housing. Land prices are too high to build single-family affordable workforce housing, and this is going to be something that we're faced with long after tonight. So, just consider that and make it your decision. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Rob.
My name is Tom Hodges, 15516 Young Street. Appreciate y'all taking the time, giving me the time to speak. I'm actually talking in support of having the ADUs and even the short-term rentals with these. I believe you all wrote a good ordinance originally. It's actually going to fall outside of our community. We just need to enforce it how correctly. This has given my family an opportunity to move to the school district my kids wanted to go to, which is Mount Pleasant Academy. It gives me the opportunity to offset my mortgage payments for prices for houses that normally we might not be able to afford with how the market's going north and north and north with the housing prices. This gives us an opportunity to offset some of these mortgage payments. It also gives us an opportunity... We decided to do short-term rentals, but other people are using these for home offices, which many people are working out of, and we're also using it for maybe the only place you can find affordable, long-term apartments in this area. I know development is something that is frowned upon in this area, more and more apartments are coming on, but prices are high. This gives somebody the opportunity to live in the neighborhood, but it's not in an apartment complex, and have affordable housing and affordable rent still. I also believe that how the ordinance was written, you know, people complained about who might issue, might have issues with parking and things of that nature, but the ordinance is already written that there has to be a designated parking spot for these ADUs. We use ours, we give one of our garage bays for it. We do not even have cars in our driveway, more or less on the street. Also, the infrastructure's already in place, the roads are in place, the water and sewer are in place. This is not adding to the infrastructure problems that we see that you all have been looking for, worried about with development. Anyway, thank you for the time. I just wanted to speak out of support of it.
Sarah. I'm sorry. Next, please. I'm Sarah Jacob, otherwise known as Sal. I live at 1152 Village Creek Lane, Apartment 1. And I'm here to speak on behalf of multifamily housing. Mainly, I'm here because, as many people know, I am really concerned about senior housing. And if we don't have multifamily housing, we will not be able to afford... Our seniors will not be able to afford rentals. And I brought the rental rates from Seven Farms Village and the minimum and maximum outcomes and incomes for those. A one-bedroom minimum income that you have to have in order to rent one of those is $1,237. The maximum income, and this is at the 50% level, is $22,050. The rent for one of those is $495. I want you to know that the average rent in Mount Pleasant exceeds $1,000. I get from my social security less money than they have for the maximum income, for the minimum income here. We need to have rentals for ordinary people. I figure I'm relatively well-educated, and I tried to plan. Many of our people in Mount Pleasant, they tried to plan, too, and they're running out of money, and they need a place to live.
Thank you, Mayor. That's fine. I favor we just get it out of the way.
Major Lieutenant Carroll, 737 Bluefield Drive. I'm excited to see these, the agenda today with new business items four through seven, without reading them all, because I know you have. I think we need to change it to work in consideration to implementation. I think six months after the election, it hasn't been addressed yet. I think we need to address it. And that's all I have to say on that, because everybody else is pretty much stole my thunder. Nancy Fairless, a friend of ours who lives in Mount Pleasant on the Sullivan Island Beach Express Highway, also known as Simmons Street, has asked me to deliver this letter personally to everybody at the board, if you don't mind.
Thank you. I received mine electronically, but I'll be glad to...
Oh, you got it?
Yes. Step right up.
1527 Haven Bridge Drive. And I am here to talk about the short-term rentals on item four of new business. Specifically, short-term rentals in my own home and sharing a room in my home. Currently, the law reads that if I had a dwelling and I wanted to do short-term rental and not live there, I could do this. It seems to me that I've heard the city council talk about concerns with noise, garbage, parking, and in my particular situation, I'm there every night to regulate that. I want the same considerations all of my neighbors want, and yet, the way the regulation reads right now, it's impossible for me to do this. If I moved out of my house, I could do it, if I went and lived someplace else. So, as the different committee, the committee, I think, is set up to actually look at this, I'd like them to look at that aspect in particular of sharing your home and not people that are going out and investing in properties and then just turning them over to property management companies and doing short-term rental. For me, this is making my home affordable housing, to be as that other gentleman said, be able to offset mortgage payment and other expenses. So, I appreciate you taking this under consideration.
Thank you. We'll take one more speaker and then we'll move on through the agenda.
Being a commander mayor and councilmembers, my name is Paul Mount. I live at 1481 Center Street Extension in Bay Club. I'm very fortunate in that, you know, I have a job that I can work out of my house. As long as I have internet, I can work anywhere. And what that means is that I chose to live in Mount Pleasant, because it has certain features. If I wanted to live in Greenville, if I wanted to live in a urban environment downtown, I could have done that. But I chose Mount Pleasant for specific reasons, quality of light, attractiveness of the neighborhoods. You know, these proposals are ways to get back to the value that is in Mount Pleasant. If you just continually build multifamily, glorified dormitories is what they are, you give no value add to Mount Pleasant anymore. There's no reason anywhere to live here as opposed to James Island or West Ashley. And the other thing I wanted to point out, I've heard some people mention a couple of times that we need to get affordable housing and, you know... To do that, and that's... Times of multifamily dwellings, very few single-family homes. Maybe saying that New York City has affordable housing. You could say the same about San Francisco. You could say the same about downtown Charleston. It's just not the way that that works. If you want affordable housing, you have to address that specifically to make that happen. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Moving on to new business, we amended the agenda earlier to move item 11A under... Somewhere in the... To... Who was that? 9C1? No, that was... 9C1. Okay, that one. All right. And turn that right over to Mark. It's consideration of the fish market.
Thank you, Mayor. Counselors, in the Economic Development Committee meeting last week, we had a unanimous recommendation of council, and this will be in the form of a motion for full council consideration for a low-key Saturday fisherman's war at the existing Coleman Boulevard Farmers Market location, with the stipulation that only our Sherwood Creek-based fishermen, no outside vendors would be allowed, and no staff time would be designated for the running of the fisherman's war at the Farmers Market, Coleman Boulevard. That's the motion that I would make, and I have lots of discussion I'd like to get into after, but the motion was considered in.
I have a motion, and I have a second.
I'll second for you.
Okay, so, I have a motion and a second. Open it up for discussion. Would you like to start discussion?
Thank you, Mayor. After attending the utility conference with the Town of Mount Pleasant for economic development... town for economic development, San Diego Water Commissioner, former council member John Byrne and I were able to personally visit the Saturday morning fisher war in San Diego. Positive energy that existed from local families patronizing and buying local fish, and it was almost, in my opinion, the profit, the catch that they were there buying was secondary to the conversation and the relationships that were clearly forged over a long time as these interactions between the customer and the fishermen were happening. Quite honestly, they were, they wanted to hear more about the catch than they were more concerned about how many pounds of fish they brought back. It was a wonderful experience. So, going back since I was elected, having, continuing to be educated on all the significant concerns and issues surrounding the fishermen, and I use the word "fishermen" that includes all ten of our fishing boats, including our shrimpers as well, when I say "fishermen." It's all included, not picking any particular one or two. And there are ten. So, understanding the challenges that the industry and the profession have been faced with over the years led me to get involved last year with the, and the friend Tommy and Grace Edwards, and help out, sponsor, and participate, and encourage others for the Ticks of the Sea event last year. I was able to understand from Elton's years of, of council, and Mayor Page, your meetings with the Shem Creek Fisheries, and understand the challenges from them. And it just seems to me that it is a great opportunity for the town to put forth a good fourth effort to, A, deal with the issues that were identified eloquently earlier at the podium with roadside vendors that we have going on last year that are a safety concern to the, to the vendors, as well as the people patronizing those vendors, as well as violating ordinances that could potentially create issues for them as well. There's no doubt that I think that 100% of Mount Pleasant, nearly 100% of Mount Pleasant, has the same affection and the love and concern for Shem Creek, its beauty and wanting to ensure the shrimp boats are there for generations to come. And it's my humble opinion that I hope that not only this motion passes at full counsel, but again, it passes unanimously to send a strong message to our fishermen that we recognize the concerns, we are utilizing an existing asset of the town that's in place, we're utilizing existing farms that are in place for our Tuesday Farmer's Market, and we're creating a designated area with the permission of Charleston County School District to have a designated area for our fishermen to sell their catch on Wednesdays from 8:00 to 12:00 on a seasonal basis for a trial basis for the first year.
Not Wednesdays, I don't think.
Saturdays, did I say Wednesday?
Yes.
On Saturdays. And that, that's, that's the motion in and of itself. We know there are significant, many other outstanding issues. In fact, many of us read the article, it happened to be timely, in this week's paper yesterday, Monday's paper, about the challenges that Port Royal is facing with their fishermen's war. It's not just Shem Creek, it's a national concern. We heard some of those concerns when we met with the economic development folks in San Diego. Saturdays is one day a week. It's a start, it's a step in the right direction, and I would, I would hope that we could move forward with this initiative. And I look forward to a little discussion.
Thank you. One more for a second, any other discussion?
Thank you. As a member of the committee, I would also like to add that the information we did receive was that the brick-and-mortar seafood vendors were in support of that, and I understand, I'm glad Mr. Fitch was here to speak out tonight. A couple of questions, a couple of issues. One is, you could make the same argument about hurting our brick-and-mortar stores to not have a Farmer's Market, because there are people selling vegetables, there are people eating, although it's not there. And it brings up grocery stores sell, and I don't think we've done that to the detriment of our existing businesses. And second of all, I don't think, and I gave that to you this morning, I don't think we're picking winners and losers here or playing favorites, because the town has invested tens of millions of dollars in Shem Creek Park Phase One, which provides parking. I know it's supposed to be for the Boardwalk Park, but if you go and buy seafood from Mr. Fitch, which we encourage you to do, then I don't think anybody's going to write you a ticket if you're parked at the Boardwalk Park and you can go shop there. And the other is, we're finishing the Boardwalk along the creek that I, that I hope will help the brick-and-mortar business to save Mount Pleasant seafood. So I don't feel like we are playing favorites with government and picking winners and losers. In fact, I, I think we're being fair in doing this, and I think it will evolve, as you mentioned, this is a good start. Because those are the questions that I will always ask as a councilman, is this a role for, for government to play? And I think in this case it is, it's an existing asset, and we've already established the principle of the Farmer's Market, and that's why I'm going to support it.
Yes, sir. Are you finished, Mr. Fitch?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Mr. Carrier?
Well, a couple of things. I buy my shrimp from Tommy Edwards, and I buy it out of the back of his pickup truck, or he delivers it to the house for a little extra fee. But we've got the Geechee Duck, we've got the individual fisherman, and we've got Ryle Fitch, and they all are in business on the creek. And I just don't want to, I don't want to hurt those people. I think it would be a shame if we did, and, and I heard him, I heard discussion earlier that we would be more than one day, more than Saturday. I would be totally against that. If this was a trial basis for one day, in conjunction with Farmer's Market, I'll support it. But if it goes beyond that, I will not, because I don't want to hurt the creek sellers any more than, they'll probably be hurt already. It's a good idea, I, you know, I think it's worth entertaining, so I, I'll support it for the one day, the Saturday.
Yes, I would just restate that, Madam Mayor, that I just responded to that, that it would clear in my motion that it's one day on Saturday, I think I misspoke and said Wednesday, but it's Saturday, specifically 8:00 to 12:00.
Thank you. Are you finished, Mr. Carrier?
Yes.
Mr. Rostos?
Yes, I just have two questions. One is, you have a feeling for who would participate in this today? As Mr. Carrier says, he has a relationship with Mr. Edwards, who delivers to his house. So, do you have a sensing for who would participate in this, or do they want to participate?
Certainly.
Well, and... Any cost to the, the town for cleanup, or, I, I know with the Farmer's Market, we do that, and we have people who monitor the vendors and a number of things at the Farmer's Market, and, you know, is there perhaps any synergy with this to have it at the Farmer's Market on Tuesdays? I don't know, and I'm just, I'm just asking, thinking out loud.
Madam Mayor, if I may?
Absolutely.
Thank you for both the great questions. Yes, absolutely on the first question, I would not waste council's time or the community's time with bringing up any proposal without doing some due diligence. 100% of the Shem Creek-based fishermen were surveyed, and the majority of them would be willing to, and interested in taking, participating in the market, including Tommy Edwards, whose names have been mentioned here several times. Grace helped expedite that, she did send an email, I don't see her sitting out in the audience. She was going to try to be here tonight to speak on behalf of Shem Creek Fisheries, but she did at the committee meeting, that was addressed at the committee meeting, that there is interest from the vendors outside of Shem Creek. This is our town's effort to save our Shem Creek Fisheries. And the second question was on cost. I, I certainly have had... Picked up the cap. Thank you.
The shrimpers that come there on Tuesdays?
They're, the name of the shrimper that comes there on Tuesdays, seasonal?
It's Tommy Cannon.
Tommy Cannon, thank you.
Well, isn't he a shrimper? Are we already doing this?
Oh, we're not talking about Tuesdays, we're talking about Saturdays.
Oh, okay. So it's just changed that, more or less.
Okay. All right. Thank you for all that. Mr. Owens?
Yes, sir, Madam Mayor. I know Buddy Fitch, I've known him probably 30, 40 years, think a lot of him, as far as I'm concerned, he's a family member. But, you know, I think that we need to come to a meeting of minds with regard to our town, and how we celebrate the creek, and what we do going forward. With this initiative, I appreciate Mark's position here, and Will's in the Economic Committee, and the work that they've done. I think we have to try to explore all avenues as far as trying to assist our shrimpers, and take every opportunity that's available to us without any harm, as Elton suggested earlier, coming to our, our creek retail. But I believe that we have an opportunity here to do something special, substantial, not only for the shrimpers, but for our town in particular. And I, my only question to Mark is, is that since we're already doing it on Tuesdays, and Elton, I think you were, you were addressing, you didn't want to do it any more than one day, we have Tommy Cannon doing it, is there any reason why others can't participate during the Tuesday Farmer's Market when there's so much traffic there already, and could potentially benefit from that?
Thank you, Mr. Owens. I'm going to bring Ashley up. You bring up a point that concerns me very much. Ryle and I have spoken of this often. Ashley, if you would come and let us know to participate in the Farmer's Market, can you give us the criteria for participation? And have these folks been asked to participate?
We have two application processes. One is food vendor, and one is a farmer. The shrimpers would actually classify as a farmer, since they harvest the seafood, and they submit an application for consideration from the board. Currently, the application was made aware to, to everyone, and we have one person submit an application, which is Tommy Cannon, as mentioned earlier.
Thank you.
And can you give me an idea of getting involved in running the Farmer's Market?
Gathering all the applications, going through proper licensing and registration. She sets the layout, she works with them on a weekly basis, determining layout, as well as working closely with police and health services to make sure they have the staff out there available for the event. So she collects those payments and puts them on the finance side of the property. So she is, is there from 1:00 to 7:00, either Tuesday throughout the season?
And the proposed Saturday market is with no staff, and is there no fees, no licensing, no checking on any of that?
I guess that would be up to council, if they wanted to proceed the same way as the Farmer's Market, as a town event, then we would require staffing to collect vendor fees. Otherwise, we could consider more of an agreement for a permit process, like a special permit, and the organization Shem Creek Fisheries could be responsible for handling the payment process and making sure regulations were covered.
Thank you very much. Does anyone else have any questions for Ashley? Yes, Mr. Fair.
Just wanted to add, I like the idea, I think this is a good opportunity to increase exposure to our industry. I mean, we've got a lot of new people who are not from here, who may not be aware of the history and the activities of the creek. And I think this puts it in a very visible, high-traffic location, which can only help the industry to increase sales, and this perhaps will be a jumping off point for other activities as well, so I, I actually support it as a, as a good start.
Mr. Carrier, did you have another question for Ashley as well?
No, just the overlap. I know we're going to talk about this task force for Shem Creek from Mr. Owens, and I guess I'm a little bit concerned that we're kind of jumping the gun maybe a little bit on this, and maybe this could be incorporated into your effort. I don't know if that's what you're thinking about, so I know we're thinking out loud here, and on the, on the fly here, but, you know, all this kind of meshes into one, and I don't, it needs to be affected, whatever we do. And if, if it means us backing off and, and letting the task force evaluate something like this, along with the other things they want to do, then so be it. But, you know, you tell me, what do you think?
Can I respond?
Um, certainly.
That's a great question. And certainly, I think the work that they have done with the communities warrants our ability to perform on this, this point. Now, as you, as we all stated a little while ago, is that this is a pilot program, in the event that it is successful and continues, and it certainly can be incorporated, and we can work together through that process, and work out the details, so that it can be incorporated into the task force. And so the task...
Well, we have tried, the mayor and I have tried repeatedly on the creek, and we haven't had much success, have we? There's a lot of factions down there that have to be dealt with, and you're going to be, you're going to see that when we get the task force going. So, you know, I, I applaud you for trying, and I hope you're successful, and I will gladly... But it is a challenge down there. There's just a lot of people involved, different people with different agendas, and, but, you know, I'm willing to give this a start, if it doesn't, if it can be incorporated into your effort.
I see no reason that it can't be incorporated, but at this time, I think that it is certainly deserving of the merit of going forward on its own at this point as a pilot program.
I have a question for you, Mark, before I call for the vote. You are presenting this as a pilot or a test program, so are there, is there some sort of timeframe? Are we going to give them a month? Are we going to look at the number of participants? Do you have, do you have some direction for staff? I'm not prepared to make a motion just to support shrimpers going to sell at the Farmer's Market on Saturday, because those of you who know me would suggest that the auctioneers will be moving in right... of you who know me would suggest that the auctioneers will be moving in right after the shrimpers leave, and we'll be having auctions on Saturday starting at 12:00 PM, for the record, so I just wondered if there was some caveat as to the timeframe or some measures that we might have and some direction to staff, because, you know, Ashley does a fantastic job, the CATS department is by far and above the best in the state, and I certainly don't want anything to come back on her if there is a failure, I don't want it to reflect on the fine job that they do with all the other projects that they're involved in.
Yeah, may I respond to that, yes, Madam Mayor, thank you, first of all, let me just reassure everyone, all of my fellow council members and the public, that unlike the auctioneers, we will not be selling caskets or urns at the Farmer's Market, and I won't be bringing any proposals for that in the future either. And I also want to, the timeline question, yes, we talked about this being a seasonal pilot program, we know that there's a season to the shrimping season, let's give it a season, I think the season could run as long as November, so can we go through the calendar year of this year and reevaluate the program at the end of the season based on participation? And some, participation would be the primary deciding factor, that if it's a go or not, was it beneficial for them and was it beneficial for the community, I think would be the, to establish some criteria, is it successful or not, and the timeline would be, let's give it a full season. We know that the three-mile line season began last Monday, we hear reports that there are lots of shrimp out there and it's going to be an abundant season, so I would encourage everyone up here on this side of the dices and on that side, and anyone who's watching these YouTube videos, please buy local shrimp, support our local fishermen, so that we can continue to have them around for a very long time. And if I may, it was brought up earlier regarding, from Ralph, who's also a dear friend, which is exactly why I went right to his business as soon as we, was the first stop that we made, after we found out that there was interest in doing this, we did, as he said, stop by his business and have this conversation with him, and we did talk about this being at Waterfront Park, and we were denied, just for the record, the use of Waterfront Park parking lot area by South Carolina DOT, so that led us to our second option, which we then, after reevaluating, think about the traffic count going by Waterfront Park compared to the traffic count going down Coleman Boulevard. It became very, very clear that we had a divine intervention through our wonderful friends at South Carolina DOT, that a better option existed to perhaps make this a little more successful, so that's how the rest of the story, as Paul Harvey would say, why Waterfront Park was brought up and why we're not discussing Waterfront Park.
And not to beliger this any longer, because I do have a motion and a second, Ashley, do you have clear direction on what you will be doing as far as procedure to be moving forward with engaging with these local fishermen?
If I could have clarification on whether we're running this exactly like the Farmer's Market with the same forms, or are we working with them through an agreement process and Shim Creek Fisheries is responsible for the regulations?
Yes.
Madam Mayor, as early as five o'clock, your very capable coworker, Tracy and I were walking the area where the proposed site that she was doing, and I would say in my motion that we have a very capable staff, and whatever they recommend would be the area to go with, and I have no objection to it being through Shim Creek Fisheries, which would benefit and bless all of our fishermen on the creek, if it's through a special permit, that way they're collecting the permit fees and it's one point of contact versus ten, I think is essentially...
I'm just, for the record, trying to make sure we've covered all our bases and that they have clear direction, I like I said, we have the best staff in the state, I just want to make sure they have the tools that they need to move forward. So, with no further discussion, we have a motion and a second, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? And the ayes have it, thank you very much. Can we take about a three-minute break, a very, very quick one, before we move into planning new business, and we should be very short on the agenda following this.
Okay, folks, we're back in session and moving on to new business, and we have handled fish market, moving on to number one, and I'm going to turn it over to Kristi Ann Carroll, this is an annexation.
Good evening, the first two items that we have on the agenda are going to pertain to a property located on Joseph Glover Road, which is just on the west of the area in Port West, so the first item in front of you is annexation of this property, it's five and a half acres, it was reviewed by the planning committee who have recommended approval of annexation.
Approve of item number one.
I have a motion and a second to approve item number one, any questions?
If we could combine one and two would be nice.
I'm amiable to amending my motion to include item number two.
I'll amend the second.
So we have an amended motion, amended second to approve items number one and two, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Sorry, what was you, did you call it for passage or were you calling to combine? Was the vote to combine?
They changed their motion and their second to combine one and two, and I was calling for a vote on the two.
On the passage?
Yes.
Okay.
Motion to approve.
I was waiting for discussion, I'm sorry.
Oh, that's fine, I'm sorry, I didn't see anyone's hand, would you like, do you have a comment, Mr. Rowan?
I have a question.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you, do we have any feedback from the Phillips community?
No.
Do we know, is this something to facilitate development where, in a cultural community where it may be intrusive or something like that, we've already heard one thing tonight, do we know the nature of the request?
The density itself is consistent with the land use recommendation for both the town of Mount Pleasant as well as Charleston County in this particular area, and the lot sizes, they've asked for R1 zoning, which is probably about the closest thing you could get to what could be developed if it was just annement, if this property was just annexed into the town of Mount Pleasant, it would come in as community conservation, lot size would be 12,500 square feet, same thing in Charleston County, they've asked for R1, which is 10,000 square feet, and is recognized within our comprehensive plan as a zoning district that is compatible with that particular land use, certainly as it's constructed, it will be more of a typical suburban type of development, what you would see in the adjacent Port West areas as opposed to kind of the, what has traditionally, been the traditional development pattern with, in a lot of these communities, so that will be, that will be the difference, is really kind of the style of development, that the density is compatible with the land use recommendation.
Is applicant here? Can we sort of ask what the nature of this is? Whatever you're comfortable with.
Yes, please, it's hard to record you from the back of the room, I apologize, and we will need your name and address for the record.
Yes, thank you, my name's Colleyson Alvin, and I'm representing the engineer as the advocate, the anchor engineer, essentially, the area that's proposed is connected to the yellow, which is already annexed and R1, the property was combined, but only the yellow was annexed in at the time, so we're asking to annex in this portion with, as far as the Phillips community, they were present at the planning commission and didn't speak against it, and tend to, we're set to meet with them on Tuesday next week, just to kind of go through what we're doing this, as far as planning, helping them understand what the plan is.
Yes, thank you.
Anyone have any other questions for the applicant?
Thank you.
You're very welcome. So we have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And the ayes have it.
First reading, ordinance number 16030, an ordinance providing the annexation approximately 5.564 acre portion of approximately 16.48 acre tract of land located at 2996 Joseph Glover Road in the Phillips community, identified by TMS number 583000003, a portion thereof depicted as lot 34A, a plaque recorded by the Charleston County RMC office in book L15, page 53. First reading, ordinance number 16031, an order to zone R1, low-density residential district in approximately 5.564 acre portions, approximately 16.4 acre tract of land located at 2996 Joseph Glover Road in the Phillips community, identified by TMS number 583000003, a portion thereof, and depicted as lot 34A, a plaque recorded by the Charleston County RMC office in book L15, page 53.
Thank you, item number three is another annexation, it's a first reading of a tract of land on Alice Smalls Road, just the answer?
Make a motion to approve.
He had a motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion to approve and a second, conversation, questions?
I'd like to hear what she has to say about it before we vote.
Absolutely. A little bit different than the last application that you just saw, in this particular request, there is only a request for annexation, the land use recommendation is community conservation as it was on the last application that you just saw, but they have not requested any type of different zoning, so it will come in as community conservation, which is the land use recommendation, lot sizes will have to be 12,500 square feet, they have already annexed the property on the other side of the street here, this is already in the town, so they are moving towards a development plan, we are going to expect certain improvements, especially with road that meet our standards, but otherwise it is, the density will be compatible and the lot size is compatible with what we require a community conservation.
Thank you, I have a motion and a second, any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And the ayes have it.
First reading, ordinance number 16032, an ordinance providing the annexation approximately 2.82 acre tract of land comprised of three parcels, located on Alice Smalls Road, identified by TMS numbers 578000022, 578000341, 578000314, and depicted in a plaque recorded by the Charleston County RMC office in book DB, page 170, and book CC, page 164, respect you.
Thank you, Kristi Ann, item number four is the consideration of amending or creating new ordinance concerning building heights, accessory dwelling units, and short-term rentals, these items were reviewed by the planning committee at special meetings, I'd just like you to review what was discussed in the planning committee special meeting.
Okay, if, I will break this down into the three different things that are mentioned here on the agenda, first, with respect to building height, this was specific to Coleman and Ben Sawyer, and this was reviewed, excuse me, by the... this was reviewed, excuse me, by the planning committee at a February 22nd special meeting. The planning committee did have discussion, and in the end did make a recommendation, so to speak, or a comment anyway, that to continue discussion at town council if necessary, but no recommendations to the height be made at this time by the committee, so the issue can be sent back to committee for additional discussion as at a later date as town council needs appropriate. So that is specific to the height item.
Okay, thank you. Is your question specific to that, Joe?
Yes, ma'am. It was my understanding these items were Mr. Councilman Santos wanted on the agenda, and I was wondering if it would be appropriate to go ahead and defer, since he's not here, to defer it to next month, so that he can articulate what his concerns were, and move things along, because he, these were specifically his.
Thank you. Mr. Bustos, you're being up at excellent point, I certainly could support of deferring these items.
Well, I'd like to make a motion then to defer item four to next month, so that Mr. Santos can be here to give his concerns.
Second.
Just so I fully understand your motion, this is a motion to bring this back to town council and not to the planning committee?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you. So we have a motion and a second to defer item number four. Are there any other questions?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And the ayes have it. Item number five is the consideration of imposing a moratorium on multifamily developments. Joe, I'm going to turn this directly over to you, Mr. Bustos, if you would...
Absolutely. For the past few months, we have been discussing in planning committee and otherwise amongst ourselves, traffic and schools and infrastructure, and that we're falling a little bit behind, not a little bit behind. But I'd like to, I'd like to preface this with putting out some information, and this information, for the most part, comes from the 2015 demographics report that the town produced. From the standpoint of residents of Mount Pleasant, 2010, we were 67,843 people. Now we are 78,988 people, and that was as of 2015, which is an increase of 11,145 people, or an increase of 16 percent that the town has grown, residents. Our schools currently have 30-plus portable classrooms in the upper part of Mount Pleasant. Our fire department calls, and most of these, as I understand, were calls for medical calls, in 2013, 6,677, and in 2015, 8,266, an increase of 1,589 calls up to 2015, or an increase of 23 percent. We can't get Highway 41 widened anytime soon. The number of additional lanes leaving Mount Pleasant since the construction of the Ravenel Bridge is zero. While we have increased by 11,145 people, no lanes, no lanes leaving Mount Pleasant. We also hear about affordable housing, and the stark reality of this is that over the past five or six years, with numerous apartments created, affordable dwelling units, a number of, in houses with the shared economy, which increases density that we really don't know about particularly, no affordable housing has been created, none. And, you know, save the 18 apartments in the boulevard. Also, the affordable housing property that had been set aside was rezoned last year to single-family, and that was, as I understand, in recognition that the developer could not produce affordable housing, he just couldn't make the numbers work. And I think that's the way it is in Mount Pleasant. Also, our impact fees are woefully behind. To go back to the school, and I'm sorry I got this a little bit out of order, in the 11th, 12th school year, we had 11,659 children in school. In the 14, 15 school year, it was 12,752 students. And then lastly, our recreation program, and I have to admit, this magazine came just in time because it had the numbers I was looking for, 19,286 participants in athletics, 55,520 participants in program, 2,667 members in the senior center, nearly 44,000 individuals registered for at least one recreation department program. We've gotten big, we have a lot of people, traffic's bad, schools are full, and my feeling is that we need to address that, and as I drive around Mount Pleasant, I see many, many multifamily developments that are currently ongoing. I think we need to take a pause and digest those developments, and if not, we are, we are going to slowly overwhelm, and not slowly, we are overwhelming our infrastructure, that being schools, police department, town staff, police department, fire department, public services, recreation department, streets, and all those things. And I think the first step in starting a reasonable growth management program is at this point, stop with the multifamily, and I'm not saying close anyone down who's currently in the process, I don't think we can do that, but I think we need to take the first step and step back from the multifamily, I don't want to call it abyss, but let's say the step back from the cliff on this multifamily development, because they just create a lot of cars, a lot of people, and a lot of strain on the infrastructure. And with that, I would like to make a motion that we impose a moratorium until we can sit down and see whether or not we have, have the ability to digest any more multifamily And that's in the form of a motion.
We have a motion and a second. Questions? We're going to need some legal clarification, Mr. Haney?
Ma'am, can we get to the map, Kristi Ann? The town map?
Yes, sir, the one from the G M.
Just all over, yeah.
Wendy Martin's switch presentation, she'll hold on one second. Keep going, Martine, you're going, this is the stuff that we just...
There we go. Okay. Does that already show the multifamily?
I put some dots on there.
Super.
That show, the previous slide shows what's under construction, or site plan is under review, and then approved, and so that, the dots correspond back to that, so if, Mr. Haney, I'll be glad to answer every question, and I'll flip back to that other slide.
Sure, sure. I wanted to go over the list you gave me, because I want to, I want the community, I want the business community, I want the apartment community to get a 10,000-foot view, that we're not closing Mount Pleasant for business, we're not going out of the apartment business in Mount Pleasant, but this is what's coming online now. And you got 324 units at Bridge Side, and on the map you'd see that's right at the foot of Cooper River Bridge.
Yes, sir.
They were approved for 573 units, and there are kickers, that they have to have their mixed use done, but they can go up to 573.
That's right.
Right down the street from them is the Tides Four, which is 55 multifamily units. Granted, these are not apartments that are going to be rented, those are townhomes, but they are multifamily. Oyster Park is 254 units, that is right at the Bylow, West Marine Shopping Center, all that traffic at Ben Sawyer and Rifle Range, and then site development is going on at six mile, stop me if I got this wrong.
Correct.
Right. Six Mile Marketplace, 92 units, Indigo Square will be 456 units, and Rivers Walk Phase Two, that's right here at Mathis Ferry.
Yes, sir.
Will be 78 more units. And then, these over here are approved, but they are not underway yet. You see 100, go down to Haven, Phase Two, there's 140 more units, that's at central Mount Pleasant. Carolina Park can have 530 units in two apartment complexes, those will be coming online at some point. The concern there is they have not even broken ground on the new school, and the Boulevard Phase Two will have 105 units. So I went to the staff, and I just wanted to get, I didn't want to react viscerally, or, in a way, because I just think the town's too crowded, I wanted to see those numbers, that's a lot of apartment units coming on very shortly, and our infrastructure, as Councilman Bustos just mentioned, is already strained, and so please, if anybody wants to say, you're saying that Mount Pleasant is closed for business, it's hard to argue with those kind of numbers being built in this town, and I think it's reasonable, and I've spoken to people in other communities, how you get affordable housing, and then I've read, you know, guidelines on the best way to do it. The best way to do it is not to go take one piece of property and say that's going to be affordable housing, it is to get affordable housing, and that does not mean your typical stereotype, low-income or subsidized housing, it's affordable housing for our teachers, our police, our firemen, our town employees, is to build it into the future developments. Well, we don't have a plan, we don't have a method to do that right now, and I think after these, I don't know what you get when you add all this up, but it looks like a lot to me, close to 1,000 more, that by the time all these are online, I think if we hit this pause button, we can work this out, and we can build affordable housing, we can, we can get our schools online, we can get Highway 40, steps to Highway 41 widening, and that's why I would support this motion. Thank you.
Mr. Brown?
Just a couple of comments. One question for Mr. Bustos, does the motion include townhomes? Because that's typically not considered multifamily.
No, I'm talking about apartment complexes.
Apartments and condos. Look, Joe, I don't disagree with your assessment, I think you did a good job of sort of summarizing the growth issues. My only concern is with the conclusion that this is the way to solve that. And I say that because, looking at, and we talked about in planning committee, having the planning division give us numbers, we can look at data, and so, just looking at the annual growth rate report that came out as of February from the town, I know emotionally you can look around town and feel like we're getting big fast, and that's frustrating. The reality is that our growth rate has stabilized and has actually begun to go down. You have to go back to 2011 to find a growth rate that's lower than where we are today. So we, it looks like that we're getting to a turn with the rate of development. Of course, you know, we want to maintain some to grow, and 2.9 is probably healthy, I don't know if it's to be a little higher, a little lower, but, but it's not crisis mode like it was last time a moratorium was talked about. That was double-digit growth, and we're at 2.9 now. I think the situation, even though emotionally it feels like we're getting out of control, from a data standpoint, it's not even comparable. Looking at, again, the permitted dwelling unit report from the planning department, the multifamily portion of those dwelling units permitted is 21 percent of all the permits, 235 units. If we really want to impact traffic in schools, according to this report, we ought to be looking at single-family homes, 721 units there versus 235 apartments. So based on this report, it doesn't, it doesn't look to me like multifamily is the driver here. It looks like, over the past few months, this council has approved at least four new single-family development neighborhoods. So by approving more single-family homes, we're actually doing more, having more impact on what you're talking about than the multifamily portion. And the town has tried to keep a 70/30 balance between single-family and multifamily. According to this report, we're at 21 percent, so well below the 30 percent target the town has tried to achieve. And so far this year, there has been zero multifamily dwelling units permitted. So again, I don't disagree with your assessment of the growth, the impact, but I don't think that restricting, across-the-board restriction of multifamily is going to be how they get there. I think we need to take a broader view of all the development that we're approving, and where it is, and the scope of that approval.
Well, no, I'm sorry.
When we, when we approve a single-family neighborhood, whether it's 100 homes there or 100-unit multifamily complex, it's really the same impact. So I don't know why we're singling out multifamily as the problem here, when we're doing a whole lot more approval of single-family homes, that's just, from a, from a data standpoint, that's what I'm seeing. I am concerned because I think if there's a solution to control multifamily, it ought to be a little bit more specific. What is the scale we're talking about? Is all multifamily off the table, or can we take a look at perhaps smaller, smaller projects being valuable to us as opposed to the larger ones? Does it have a matter of where these projects go? Some parts of our town are better suited for multifamily projects than others. Perhaps the Coleman corridor might not be a good place for those kind of developments, but the north area might be, or it might be better to have multifamily around where the jobs are. We've got hospitals, we've got schools, that have a lot of people traveling to them every day, it might make sense and cut down on traffic if we approve multifamily projects in those facilities as opposed to other parts of town. So I guess what I'm suggesting is that we take a little bit more of a surgical look at where the problems are and what the best solutions are, instead of a overall moratorium on one type of housing. I'm concerned that if somebody does come forward with a project that does have an affordable housing component to it, or, as somebody mentioned earlier, senior housing, I'd like the opportunity to look at that project and evaluate it on its merits, instead of just saying, because you fall in this category, we're not going to consider it at all. So I would just ask that we, if multifamily is something that's a concern, let's be a little more surgical about it, and say, where is it appropriate, where is it not? How large a project should be looking at, and what's too large? And I think this, this body right here has the ability to deny any project that we feel like is contributing inordinately to the, to the growth impact. Want to say that.
Thank you, Mr. Murray, I had someone else ask for the floor, Joe, I apologize.
Mr. Bustos, you can go.
Thank you, Mr. Bustos.
Sure, and, you know, you make good points, and I agree with you. This is a first step with multifamily, but you're right, single-family does need to be looked at. Single-family growth, and, you know, the only couple that's been voted, denied, has been in the last couple of months. But you say from the data that we're not growing that quickly, but from raw numbers, 2.91 percent of 78,000 people is considerably more than, I'll say, 3 or 4 percent of 40 or 50,000. So from the standpoint of numbers, your assessment's flawed, because you're getting a smaller percent, percentage of a larger number. But you're right, I agree with you, single-family homes are problematic as well, and we probably should be looking at that. And this is reminiscent of, right before permit allocation came into existence, our infrastructure was behind, a lot of things going on, and during that time, it gave us the ability, for the schools, I'm sure Mac remembers, the schools were able to get rid of all their trailers, we built Hungry Neck Boulevard with money within the town, and we were able to do those things. And this moratorium... And this moratorium is not forever. Please understand, this isn't forever. This is, and I probably should say, for 90, 180 days. And then, once we have the understanding of what we need to do to digest all these, all the people, all the cars, all the students, all the people who come into Mount Pleasant, and perhaps a developer will come in and say, listen, because it's the development community, not this town, not the town staff that has, it's the development community, I believe, has the wherewithal, the understanding, to come in and say, I can produce affordable housing. I can produce senior housing. There was one development that was able to do that off of Gregory Ferry Road. And he, the developer, went to the banks, found low-cost money, did the development, restricted by salary, who could move in? I believe we had a couple of town employees who actually moved into that development. That's the only time it's been done in this town. And giving densities, bonus densities, and all these other things has not yielded any appreciable, affordable housing, senior housing, whatever you want to call it. And sitting here and saying, well, we just need to keep doing what we're doing. You know, doing the same thing and expecting a different outcome is a definition. And we don't need to be doing that. And we need to talk about it, and we need to hit the pause button on this so that we can realistically project what we can digest and then move forward at that rate.
Now, just quickly, just respond to one point that you made, and that is...
Absolutely.
Just for the record, I wasn't suggesting that we look at any kind of moratorium on single-family homes. Just want that clear for the record.
But...
But I was saying that...
I agree with your point, though.
Well, I think my point was that we need to be not pulling out one type of housing and treating it differently. We're going to be looking at reining in the number of rooftops. We should be looking at all types of housing and the conditions that we approve those in as opposed to one specific. And, you know, Joe, I would love, I would welcome an amendment to the motion if you want to put some sort of timeline on the moratorium. That, I think, would, I think that would be a different kind of request as opposed to leaving it at the length of you...
Again, moratorium cannot, will not be forever open-ended. Yeah. And I'll say 180 days. I'll add that to the motion. But at any time, if we see in 60 days, information comes in and we see that we can do this or whatever it is to accommodate all the people here, maintain their quality of life, and grow our infrastructure, we can come in and do away with moratoriums and start implementing those plans, and then we'll move forward.
Do I need to...
Yes, Ed, yes.
Would you like for me to, so that the discussion... Okay, I will amend my second to reflect that. I believe that.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Bremmer?
Well, I don't know where to start, quite frankly. I've attended the last two Housing Task Course meetings as an observer. No other councilman has attended. To me, it's a very important committee that's been formed. They're looking at a lot of things. They're studying a lot of demographics. I actually had Kristi Ann send all of you those demographics today, and I hope you study them because they're current and they're very informative. We have a 2.91 growth rate. When I go to the Municipal Association meetings in February and July, and I talk about that kind of a growth rate, people just are stunned. 200 municipalities in this state don't even have a growth rate. Zero. And, you know, we live in quite a place here. You know, yes, we have growth. Yes, we have people that want to come here because of the beaches, because of Charleston. My goodness, we are so fortunate. But, you know, I go back to my banker days. I studied economics in college. The economy will take care of our demand and supply. Developers aren't going to develop multifamily or single-family or anything housing-wise if there's no demand. Right now, there's heavy demand. Look at the paper this morning. Charleston County, 2% growth rate in housing. I mean, that's been the case for the last six, eight months. Every month, it's another 2%. I mean, you can't, it's just where we live, folks. But when you start putting a negative with this, when you start, start this, just start this, it will not, it will have nothing but a negative on our economic development, on our businesses in this town. There's no way it is a positive. No way. It just does not happen that way. When you start something like this, it doesn't turn around. You can say 180 days, you can say a year, it just doesn't turn around. We get that, we get that connotation that we are not open for business, folks. And that's a sad thing because we've worked very hard through our Economic Development Committee, through our Economic Development Officer, who's doing a great job to attract businesses. They're not going to come here when there's no growth. They're not going to come here. I can tell you that right now, no matter what the perks are with Charleston and the beaches and all that. Affordability, Sally said it right. The seniors have only one place to live, and that's in multifamily housing. Our firemen, our policemen, our service people, they have only one place to live in this town, and that's multifamily. They can't afford the house and the criteria that goes with trying to qualify for a mortgage. Do you know what it takes to qualify for a mortgage today? I mean, it's eons past what I ever knew it was when I was a banker 10 years ago. I mean, you just can't qualify. The average Joe Blow just cannot qualify. I mean, I'm on the Habitat Board here east of the Cooper. And believe me, we have 90 applicants for three houses that we just, we just approved three applicants out of 90 applications. And I'm telling you, it's just a serious situation. But you can't get, you can't remove the one part of this community that people can really hang on to and can come over here and enjoy this place. So I beg you to please think about it, guys. This is serious stuff. I mean, when you put a negative with all of this, it doesn't turn around. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Mr. Smith?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. A couple of points, or questions, rather. Joe, certainly the school statistics that you gave out are alarming. And as a father of two kids in a school system, I understand, I don't have to read reports, I understand clearly the concerns in the school district. I guess my question would be, have you reached out to any of the administration to hear their concerns specifically? Or were all of your educational school points based solely on town-produced reports?
No. I, Mr. Stotts. Did you get those numbers? Mr. Stotts? School board.
So you spoke to the school board member for those numbers?
Yeah.
Okay, great. Super. And the pesky facts that keep getting in the way that are really non-disputable, when you look at the historical rates, again, I acknowledge and recognize there are concerns that we have in our town. And no matter what circle you speak in, traffic always comes up as the number-one concern. But in 1996, our growth rate was 4.5. '97, it went to 4.9. '99, it went to 7.39. 2000, it almost doubled and went to 13.7%. We had significant growth rates in those days that created this council and from the double-digit growth, absolutely different circumstances. Folks, again, those pesky facts that keep getting in the way the last three years, 3.84 in '13, down to 3.43 in '14, and '15, down for the third year in a row to 2.91%. I'm not giving those pesky facts to say that we don't have issues. But that, what Elton spoke of earlier, has got to be thought about and keep everything in perspective as we're dealing with this. I would rather go after aggressively the number-one concern we all have. And you said it adequately, that I agree with. It's infrastructure. It's traffic. Let's continue to aggressively fund, because we've got the best of the best leading our traffic department. We don't need to bring in fancy, expensive consultants. We don't need to spend a ton of money. We already got the work done. Let's work hard, let's roll our sleeves up and find the funding and fund the darn roads that are unfunded, starting with Highway 41. And I give all due credit, work is due, that we're heading in that direction. And I don't care who owns what road. If you live in this town, you drive on all the roads. You don't say, oh, I'm going to turn right on the county road, I'm going to turn left on the state road, I'm going to turn, go straight on the town road. It or not who owns the road, you're trying to get from point A to point Z. And if you can't get there, that affects your quality of life. Those are the issues that I'd rather see a significant, meaningful discussion built on is infrastructure. So I'm in agreement with you. I think the strategy, the approach, I won't be supporting this motion irregardless of any day whose time to it, but I will absolutely support a discussion that deals with the issue, starting with traffic.
If I may...
Yes, sir. Mr. Bustos?
And you make a good point, and I look right over your shoulder where you talk about 4%. There were 17,000 people, 754 new units in 2014. It was 3.4, but there was 1,142 units. Again, a smaller percentage of a larger number. And you make a good point about money. And I think we should make as aggressive a case as possible to the state, to whomever, for money. But unfortunately, that's not forthcoming. And you can be as aggressive as you want, but it's not forthcoming. And so for us to put our head in the sand and say, we're going to look for money, well, we're always looking for money. And if I remember correctly, at the Planning Committee, you said that you did not agree with raising impact fees. That's aggressively going after money to pay to mitigate development's impact on our infrastructure. So you can't have it both ways. I understand what you're saying.
Madam Mayor, I would just want to go on the record and say, I did say that in the Planning Committee. My record reflects, I did not vote for any tax or fee increase since my term in office, and I will not ever support a tax and fee increase in the foreseeable future.
Thank you. Mr. Bremmer?
Just a question for Kristi Ann. Kristi Ann, how many of these developments on the slide are reflected in the February report? Are all of those reflected in there as dwelling units that have been approved?
I'm sorry. Oh, in this report? Well, no, I mean, we haven't reached certificate of occupancy. I think that what you will see when it comes to the annual growth rate for dwelling units this coming year, we will see completion of Bridge Side, completion of the Tides, and completion of Oyster Park, and all likely, all three of those. And perhaps, depending on, I think that those that are under site development likely will not make this calendar year. But I would expect at least those top three.
So these units are not included in this report that I'm looking at?
They wouldn't be in the growth rate, yeah. Because we don't include, we don't include units in the growth rate until after they receive their certificate of occupancy.
So the number of dwelling units permitted annually in that section of the report?
They, well, that would be a mixture. Bridge Side was permitted at the end of 2014, so that would have been reflected up into that number. Oyster Park is this year, and then I, Tides may have fallen under that townhouse category in sort of the multifamily in terms of how it was permitted through the building department. We'll have to look at that. But to go back to answer the question, we don't, when it comes to the growth rate, we do not, we don't put dwelling units in there until after they receive their certificate of occupancy.
And if my math is correct, we're talking about over 2,600 units on that slide there?
I added it up to 2,200.
It's over 2,000.
I'm a counselor.
It was over 2,000.
It's over 2,000.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Kristi Ann, I have a couple of questions for you. The growth management plan calls for a ratio of multifamily, single-family, correct?
I didn't recall that it did, but we have, I didn't recall that that was specific in the growth management plan. We have, for many years, looked at maintaining generally, if by policy, a 70-30 ratio, which is something that was really established back in the 1980s, and it was, it's a number that's kind of stayed with the town. And that's the reason we track that number as a matter of interest going forward.
Is that, from a planning point of view, is that a number that was randomly chosen? Is it a good planning practice number? Is it an arbitrary number?
It was a policy decision made in the 1980s, decades ago, and has continued forward as, it's just a number that we track for informational purposes. It doesn't, we don't have any sort of legal requirement or anything within our zoning ordinances that would require that, us to maintain that ratio right now.
Okay, thank you. So there's no triggers in place for us to control multifamily? So perhaps instead of a moratorium, we could have a bigger discussion on a percentage or a trigger, or have a more comprehensive view of housing in general?
I believe we have one comp plan, isn't it?
I'm sorry.
Isn't it 8515 is in the comp plan?
8515 is in the comp.
The ratio of single-family to multifamily?
Well, we have the ratio that we maintain on this sheet, which I'm not sure which one's in the comp plan there, but we do track single-family to multifamily. And right now, if you look at everything that's currently built, we are maintaining a, it's like a 73 to 26%. And even if we included to that everything that's been approved on top of that, it still maintains that same ratio of 73 to 26% single-family to multifamily.
That's everything on the screen? Everything? All in?
That's everything that's built and everything that's approved.
Thank you.
Thank you. I have another question for Mr. Paccherini. These are big decisions, the big decisions that I haven't received any legal advice on. I haven't received any staff advice on what the possible repercussions of a movement such as this. And I have two council members that are absent tonight. Could you give me any idea what potential legal advice you might offer? Or would you be comfortable giving that in this setting?
Well, first of all, we'd be glad to provide a comprehensive advice on it because there's a lot of moving parts, I think, what was mentioned. I think some reference to vested rights as to what has been approved, and I think that's relevant consideration. So we're happy to provide a detailed memorandum. What I would say right now is that the town has an ordinance that applies to this situation on 56.032. And the language is generally, a moratorium on development is justified in certain circumstances and can be implemented to prevent property owners from hindering and/or circumventing the zoning process. So right away, we have to look at hindering or circumventing the zoning process as the key. And that would basically be what we'd be addressing in our opinion.
That kind of went a little right ahead. Could you take that down a little bit? I'm sorry.
Sure. State case law and our ordinance essentially are the same. When there is such a suspension of one of our ordinances, in this case, the zoning ordinance, we should have a defined end, and we should have a... we should have a defined end, and we should have a plan in the works moving forward to solve the problem. So I think both factors are important when you consider. Moratoriums are absolutely legal and, and allowed, I just think it all has to be under the right circumstance, and that means a plan moving forward, how are we gonna solve it, as well as a defined end.
So you may not be uncomfortable with a decision on a blanket moratorium without an idea of how we might accomplish changes that Mr. Bustos is seeking?
Well, that's what our ordinance suggests, in that a moratorium may be implemented to prevent property owners from hindering and/or circumventing the zoning process, and I think that's an important element, meaning if they're, if, a moratorium is certainly feasible and appropriate if it's designed to prevent property owners from hindering and/or circumventing the zoning process.
Thank you. I feel a little better about that now. Ms. Robins?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. Kristi Ann, over the last five years, where are we tracking with multifamily as far as the total? We just said we've got twenty-two hundred here this year. What are we looking like in the last five years, just as an average?
We certainly have had several relatively large apartment complexes. I don't know the number off the top of my head, but if, if we would think of the Haven, the Boulevard, Riverwalk, those three in and of themselves would probably get close to a thousand, and I'm sure I'm forgetting something, but if that would give you an idea for, this would have been the past few, within that timeframe.
Is, through that tracking, does it, you know, to your best guess, does it look like we're tracking upward in the multifamily?
That was a trend, yes. You know, and I think you, you see that here. We, we went through a long time, a period of time where we didn't have any, and that actually was even followed by a period of time where every, almost every single apartment complex in the town of Mount Pleasant turned condo. And so we, we really didn't have any apartment rentals, and then we hit just that kind of a period of time where there was no growth of any sort, whether it's a single family or multifamily. So it's been, it, it went through a very quiet period before it entered into those complexes that I just named, kind of where the beginning of, of that, and then you've seen that these, we've got these kind of approved or underway here. So I don't know if that helps answer your question.
It does. I, I, you know, I'm, I'm taking from what you, through your conversation, is that it looks like the multifamily has been tracking upward in the last five years. We hit a lull in the recession, started amping its way back. You talked about a seventy-thirty ratio with regard to multifamily versus single family, and that it's, that, that's been enacted since the eighties. And so with the amount of growth, is there a potential for, for reduction in the percentages and looking and reevaluating that to today? Because my concern is, Kristi Ann, is that our infrastructure, we continue to be reactive and not proactive in our infrastructure, and so we're, we're lagging in our infrastructure, which is a grave concern to everybody present and also to all of our citizens. And I, I would just, I, I think that that needs to be revisited, to take a look if it, it meets today's standards with the, the rate of our growth, and see if we can't cobble those percentages into something that is a little more palatable for our town. But for the time being, we're only asking for a space of a hundred and eighty days, six, six months for this moratorium, and everybody hates the term moratorium, but it's just a vessel that we use to try to, try to slow the process of the multifamily in particular. So for that reason, I'll, I'll be supporting Mr. Bustos's motion.
I appreciate your comments, Mr. Robins. Of course, you know, I don't think you can build the infrastructure before people come, and I certainly can't tell the difference between what we're trying to exclude and what we're trying to include, multifamily, single family. Perhaps this is, again, a more comprehensive decision. I won't support a moratorium. I don't like the word moratorium. I don't think it's a, I don't think it brings us together as a community. I don't think it hears the voice of the whole community. So I certainly appreciate your efforts here. I would also, I have a motion in a second, but I'd also be very cautious based on the legal advice that we have received from Mr. Pagliorene, that we're calling for a hundred and eighty days moratorium on multifamily building. I'm not quite sure exactly what we're trying to accomplish, because I don't think we'll have a road or a school finished by a hundred and eighty days. So I'm not quite sure where, what, I'm not quite sure what we're going to accomplish in a hundred and eighty day period, other than giving a very mixed signal to the community that we've worked very hard to encourage to invest in our community, so that we can include housing options. So that, that's my concern, why I won't support a moratorium. But if there's no more conversation, I'll, I'll just, I'll just comment and say that
I, I don't think the moratorium will solve the problem that we've identified tonight. As I mentioned, the data, this is, it is more destructive for us to be approving projects, new neighborhoods at ten mile, which draws traffic all the way through the town to work and to stores. That does more damage to infrastructure and traffic than a hundred unit multifamily by the bridge. So I think, I think the issue really is a more comprehensive look at planning. That being said, I like, I like to truly understand what we're looking at, and if we're talking about a six months of, of not building multifamily, or at least taking that time to think about it, I think that also jobs very well with the work of the Workforce Housing Group. They're also exploring the options here to see what is appropriate levels of multifamily and how that can be used. So I'll, I'll support the motion. Again, I, I don't think it's a solution, but I think it gives us a little time to think. And I wouldn't be supporting it if we didn't have two thousand units currently in the pipeline. And if we didn't have those units in the pipeline and we're gonna have a deficit, I'd say that's a problem. But we're, the next six months, we're gonna be bringing a lot of these units online, and I think that's, it will provide housing options for the next six months, if it's already available. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So we have a motion in a second. Sorry, Ms. Bagwell, I extended.
I thought I had to speak, but you haven't called my name yet.
We haven't had a chance to call speakers yet, we're still in discussion, so appreciate them. We haven't called any of the speakers. Ms. Farrell, so we have a motion in a second for a moratorium for a hundred and eighty days on multifamily building. Based on the legal advice that I've heard tonight, before we had final reading, I would need to know what we're trying to accomplish or what the plan would be going forward for that hundred and eighty days. Do you have clarity in the motion, understanding what Mr. Bustos is trying to accomplish from where we are in this conversation and this discussion we've had tonight?
No, ma'am, I, I haven't heard any specific direction to planning staff in terms of what we're supposed to provide, or...
Well, I'd be glad to do that, if you'd like. I mean, the pause, a hundred and eighty days, is to give all of us the opportunity to look at where we are. Mark has made very good comments about funding for infrastructure. We've talked to the school, and we know we're putting a, a demand on the school, and the school, the school district is not gonna turn, they will not turn away students, nor should they. But it will give us an opportunity to see how to address our infrastructure that is falling behind, and the answer may be at the end of a hundred and eighty days, that we can't get there from here. But let's not create more and more of what is impacting us, and I think the point was made at a, at a, at a retreat, that Mount Pleasant's living on growth, not, not economic development, living on growth. And at some point, when this town is built out, the only place that we will be able to go is to the rooftops for money to pay for staff and, and, and everything that the town needs to pay for to support this community. And I would encourage that economic development be part of this plan forward. So it's where the staff would need to work on, when do you predict that our infrastructure will be able to digest not only what we have now, but what's in the pipeline? And Mr. Bremer made a very good point. We may come through that analysis to the realization that single family is as large, if not larger, than the multifamily. I, I won't say problem, but what we have to solve for our infrastructure.
I'm a mayor, and councilman.
Yes, certainly.
Our margin of error would be not to accept any new applications for building apartments for multifamily structures.
Well, no, I, I would think that we need to say we're not gonna accept them, because they're gonna be, they'll just stack up, and we've seen what happens when they get approved and they sit, and then all of a sudden, the developer comes out and says, "Well, I've had this for seven years, and I'm ready to build now." It catches everyone off guard. And so, no, I think, I think Mr. Moore is absolutely correct.
May I speak?
Thank you. I'm ready for public comments. We have several, I think we have five speakers lined up.
Rich Estes?
I already spoke.
Clint Cowden? Mr. Wolf?
I'm okay.
You gotta go.
I was assigned to you, and I've got your afternoon sign up sheet, but I would love to ask a question.
So would I.
Okay. No, ma'am, this is public comment, so this isn't really banter back and forth, it's not time to question the council.
My name is Jimmy Bagwell. I live at forty-one Vincent Drive here in Mount Pleasant. I've lived in Mount Pleasant for sixty-seven years. I want to commend Councilman Bustos for having the courage to bring this to the, to the public's eye tonight. I think he is reflecting the will of the people that was reflected in the vote in last November's election. I think that when you look at our growth rate at three percent, four percent, we did a little analysis, if you grow at three to four percent for the next thirty-five years, we will have about two-hundred-and-thirty thousand people in the town. If we grow at one point five percent, we'll have about a hundred-and-thirty to a hundred-and-forty thousand people in this town. So a few percentage points in our growth at this point in the history of this town makes a big difference. I think we are going to ruin what has made Mount Pleasant a great place to live if we can continue to pile people in here, apartment complex after apartment complex. We are drained lakes to build apartments right now. I think that we have reached a point where we've gotten not only look at our, our, our multifamily growth, but our single family growth. I think, there are towns all over this country that have said enough is enough, and they have resolved to stay their quality of life. And I think that's what we're talking about. I heard somebody, I think I heard Mr. Smith, mention quality of life a few minutes ago. We are going to ruin the quality of life in this town if we continue to go grow unabated, and I commend this council for taking a stand here tonight. I commend Mr. Bustos for having the courage to bring this forward. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Sarah Jacob, council?
I've already spoken.
That's all. We had signed up to speak. Yes, ma'am, you're very welcome. If you'll come forward, state your name and address. For the record, you'll have two minutes to address the council.
Okay, thank you. My name is Pam Ireland, and my address is eight-twenty Fiddler's Point Lane in Harbor Watch. I just, I have one comment, which is, I totally understand and support the whole idea of affordable or workplace housing. What I'm wondering, though, is how many of those units that are in the pipeline, so to speak, are affordable housing? And what is affordable housing? Does this town have a definition of it? Is it up to six hundred dollars for a studio, up to nine hundred dollars for a one-bedroom? I keep hearing this term affordable housing, but it's a completely amorphous term. It's sort of what everybody sort of thinks it is in their own head, and yet, so if, if we've got over two thousand units in the pipeline, and they're all gonna start at fifteen hundred dollars or eighteen hundred dollars a month, it does absolutely nothing to solve the problem of the commuting issue, or the, the workplace, or the senior housing. So I would just, you know, say, I would so, hope that this council would support the motion to give everybody a break to sort of think about this. That's one specific item, I think, that is absolutely imperative to be considered when you start, start to look at what's in the pipeline and what, what the town actually plans going forward.
Thank you.
My name is Patrick Arnold, of twenty-five Beverly Road, and I serve as the Government Affairs Director for the Charleston Tryton Association of Realtors, and as the voice of the real estate industry in the Low Country, we as an association cannot support the arbitrary ban on multifamily apartments, the ban on ADUs, those changes to the overlay district or tax increases in the form of developmental impact fees. Mount Pleasant has a major affordable housing problem, and here we are debating a ban on the only affordable housing options in the town. You laugh, but this is simple supply and demand. If you wanna know how you bring down the, the prices for these apartments, you have to allow them to come on.
Wheel it up a order, please.
What does it say about a town that's willing to ban something that its teachers, first responders, and elderly, or anyone who can't afford a half a dollar, a half a million dollar mortgage desperately need? Regardless of one's opinions of the aesthetics of apartments or ADUs, or how it affects the character of the town, all experts agree that Mount Pleasant has a desperately needs more apartments and housing options. I'm asking you to put personal preferences ahead of real world problems facing your citizens. Your traffic is your concern, the experts agree the town doesn't have too many people, it has too many people commuting here because they're priced out of the market. I've heard some say that the housing in Mount Pleasant is never going to be affordable, and you shouldn't even try. That is a dangerous way to look at our problems and a perfect way to create a housing crisis. On behalf of the real, real estate community and the Realtor Association, I urge you to reject this plan to make housing more unaffordable. Thank you.
Karen, would you like to speak? She was, she had rec, I'm sorry, Barry, she had recognized, I, I had recognized her first.
I'm Karen Flores. I've lived in this town for fifty-four years. I don't understand a lot about all of this, but I do understand that, you just said supply and demand. I counted two thousand, five hundred and fifty-two just sitting here. That's ten developments. I'm driving around today, and there's a lot more than ten developments going on right now in Mount Pleasant, a lot more. This alone is equalling, you guarantee there's gonna be more than one person in each one of these units, so that's, that's two thousand, five hundred and fifty-two. Do two people in that unit, that's over five thousand people. So that's probably two people driving, which is gonna be over five thousand more cars in this town. Traffic is horrendous, but we have more of a problem. Drive around and look at the developments going on here. Real estate and everything. We need to stop all of this development. It's ridiculous. We are not structured for it right now, we should not have it going on. And then, I know you've already voted on it, but the best thing in this town was Shem Creek, and look what's going on over there. Ridiculous.
Thank you, Mr. Page. Barry Wolf, fourteen sixty-eight Pocahontas. I was going to defer, but I'm deferring, I defer.
That was over my head as well, Barry.
You know, I, I'm, I'm glad that the Charleston County, you know, Realtor guys could talk their book, 'cause I, I'm in the business, and you always talk your book. But, you know, this is part of, of what the Charleston, these guys have promoted, and the answer is, none of it is affordable housing. They haven't promoted anything. So let's not think we can dumb down real estate prices in Mount Pleasant, 'cause it's not gonna happen. This is the February fifteenth report by the town. It reflects about, and I did this math very quickly, so I probably messed up, but there's sixty-four hundred housing units. Twenty-six hundred of these are apartments. 2,600 of these are apartments. That's 40% of the total. The rest is divided between single-family and townhomes. The townhomes, the single-family, very quick math, is 1,400 out of these. So that balance, which is about 2,000 and something odd, or whatever, is townhomes. So, and, and townhomes and single-family equal density, no matter how you slice it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other questions, comments?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Owens?
Yeah, just, just as a brief overview, Charleston County median home prices for the month of February 2016 was $310,000. In Mount Pleasant, Area 41, they were $465,000, and in Area 2, median home prices were $515,000. Just as a, just as a note as far as what the value of home prices are today.
Thank you for that real estate update. I appreciate your comments. We have a motion and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Brummer?
Aye.
Mr. Brummer votes yes. Mr. Bustos?
Aye.
Mr. Bustos votes yes. Mr. Carrier?
No.
Mr. Carrier votes no. Mr. Garch is absent. Mr. Haney?
Aye.
Mr. Haney votes yes. Mr. Owens?
Aye.
Mr. Owens votes yes. Mr. Santos is absent. Mr. Smith?
Nay.
Mr. Smith votes no. Mayor Page?
Nay.
Mayor Page votes no.
Motion passing. Thank you. Item number six on the agenda is consideration of removing the three-foot setback allowance for accessory structures. And Mr. Bustos, I'm going to turn it over to you.
Yes, ma'am. Very, very quickly, we have three-foot setbacks for accessory dwelling units, and some of these go up to 25 feet, and they tower over folks' backyards. And I would like to at least see a six-foot setback, so that people who want to work on their accessory dwelling units don't have to go in the neighbor's yard in order to get to their unit. And I think six foot, six feet is, is a good minimum rather than three feet. And I'll put that in form of motion. Second.
So we have a motion and a second. Questions?
Just, I think that Kristi Ann had made a point during the committee that it would exclude the possible installation of other accessory amenities in the backyard, like pools and other dwellings, or, or buildings.
Well, I can clarify that comment, and then I had a question for clarification for myself.
Sure, sure.
When, when Mr. Bustos made the motion originally in Planning Committee, the way it was phrased, I think, at least I understood it, that he was potentially proposing that any accessory structure would have to match the setbacks of the principal dwelling, which normally, like for a backyard in R1, would be like 30 feet. So that's when I made that comment, and therefore sought clarification from Mr. Bustos if that was what his intent was, and you explained otherwise.
Yeah, well, in, in going through this, like I say, I, you know, if it's greater in other places, for neighborhoods, from the HOA requirements and one thing or another, that's fine, but I think we at least have to have a minimum of six feet. And, and, you know, 30 feet, that may be too much. We're, we're looking at, like I say, these accessory, accessory structures, they're just too, too close to property lines. And there are some places, you know, lots are small, people want to have an accessory building, like a garden shed or a garage, you know, that goes with the home. I think six feet is reasonable.
And then my question for clarification, when you first said something just a few minutes ago, you said accessory dwelling units, but as we discussed it in Planning Committee, I think you intended that it applied to all accessory structures.
Correct.
So that somebody had a garden shed?
A garden, right.
Or something, it would also be six feet.
Right. And it's your. Yeah, that, that gives people, you know, an area that they can get behind the shed rather than right up against the fence, or have, if they want to go up on the roof, they have to stand a ladder in the neighbor's yard.
Mr. Carr?
I would like to put it on the record, because it was publicly posted in the Post and Courier several months ago, that one of the Save Shem Creek board members was very vocal about an ADU in his neighbor's backyard overlooking into his yard. And I think that's where this comes from, unless I'm corrected. But I do believe that that's where all this originates, and it's totally unnecessary. Like, you, you can't go into your neighbor's backyard to work on your house unless you get permission to do that. So, you know, I think this is where it comes from, and, you know, sad, sad that it is, but that's the way, that's the way it was put in the paper, and that's what was publicly put out.
I'll be glad to correct you. You're wrong. You know, that's no problem. And I don't, I didn't realize that, that what you're saying was from a board member of the Shem Creek, Save Shem Creek Board. Actually, it comes from living on King Street, walking around, and seeing some of these structures right against the fence, and that are very tall. As a matter of fact, on Facebook, there were some folks who posted pictures in their yard. And I, and I didn't ask for the property to be identified. I don't know who the property owner is, but this comes from simply walking around Mount Pleasant.
Well, I walk in the same area you do, and I haven't seen a bad one yet. I think they're all pretty well done and very attractive. And I don't think they need any setback lines, other than what's required by the town. I mean, I don't think that's a bad setback that we have. I mean, it's, you know, you can go, that's where most of them are, either an eye on or the old village, and that's, you know, every one of them is very nicely done, quite frankly, because they have to go through such a review process with the old village historic district commission.
Well, there, there are others around, but I assure you, you're right.
Thank you. Mr. Smith?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. How long, Kristi Ann, have the current setbacks been in place?
With three-foot?
Yes.
Well, there's, there's kind of two parts to that answer. The three-foot setback was, was in the ordinance already for some of our zoning districts that allow smaller lots. At the time, there was, it was called RPH, now we call it R4. So that was in existence for as, as long as I know of, or I can think of. But then, in, I think it was around 2007, we adopted what was called the SR2 overlay district, and so that applies to kind of the, sort of the Indian Village of, of Mount Pleasant, and it is, it kind of mirrored what we allowed for the RPH district, and that's where the three-foot setback became applied in that area. The majority of that property is zoned R2, and then the SR2 overlay district sits on top, and it allows for modification to setbacks. And so it, for, for that part of Mount Pleasant, that old Mount Pleasant, it has been in existence for about nine, nine years. It did already exist for some developments that maybe had patio homes on it already.
Any other questions? We have a motion and a second. Change the setbacks. Have a speaker signed up.
Mr. Wolf?
I think Berry Wolf 1468 Pocahontas, by the way, in the SR2 overlay district. And I think what, what Kristi Ann has just said is, is really partly my issue, and partly what Joe sees walking around the Indian Village, is the fact that this has the effect of clustering these structures in a traditional 1950s, 60s ranch, single-family district. And that's the problem I have with it. Thank you.
Jimmy Bagwell?
I live at 41 Vincent Drive here in Mount Pleasant. I am opposed to ADUs in general. There's a piece of property on Cancer Drive right now that is a corner property. There's a lot next door to that. The lot next door to that was bought by an individual, and he bought the property on the corner. So he subdivided the original lot that he bought, and he got three lots. Now he's building three houses where there used to be two, but not only that, in addition to those three houses where there used to be two, he has also applied for an ADU in the backyard of each one of those lots. So now where we used to have two houses, we now have six living units. So just multiply the number of cars, the number of people that are going to be living there. And if you start to do that all over this part of town, all over any part of town, you're going to change the character and the nature of our neighborhoods. I think that we ought to ban ADUs altogether, and I, and I think this council ought to take a real hard look at it, because it is going to do a lot to change the character of our neighborhoods. The incident that Mr. Carrier was talking about a few minutes ago, I did stand in the backyard with, with a friend of mine, who woke up one morning and saw an ADU pop up in his backyard. It was built about three feet from this bench. Where he used to have privacy in his backyard, that privacy, privacy was gone. He didn't bank on that ADU being there when he bought that house and bought that lot. I think ADUs are wrong for this town, and I hope that you'll take a hard look at it. Thank you very much.
Clint Cowden?
Clint Cowden?
Aye.
Thank you. That's all I had signed up to speak on this. Any other questions for Kristi Ann or staff? So we have a motion and a second. All in favor of, well, actually, just so I, just so I understand. So you want to remove the three-foot setback allowance for accessory?
We'll establish a minimum six-foot setback. Set back. If that clarifies some.
I might, we'll keep that a couple of slides later. I'll show you what the text is. Keep going. There. And so if, if y'all direct us to proceed, we'll go to the Planning Commission, and basically what we would do is we would take out what I've highlighted in red, because this is otherwise what the regulation states. And when it says they, it's talking about an accessory structure, they may, are not erected with, or placed within six feet of the side or rear property lines, and so this would be removed. Staff would review this aspect, too. We have not talked about this, but I would, I suppose that this also would be removed, and so this regulation would apply about proximity to a dwelling on another piece of property. So that's helpful to see the way the text is currently written.
Thank you for that clarification. It helps a lot, so.
May I verify, ma'am, so everyone's clear? This would not happen right away. This would be council's permission to direct legal staff to prepare an ordinance to be sent to the Planning Commission. Does it affect his own?
Right, okay.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Nay. Did you get the nays?
Aye. Mayor Page? Mr. Carrier? Anyone else?
Mr. Smith.
Thank you. Item number seven is consideration to hold Coleman Boulevard, Bensar Boulevard overlay district, district, excuse me, in advance until traffic and density issues are addressed. Mr. Bustos?
Yes, ma'am. Here again, we have areas that are in the overlay district with up to 16 units per acre, and combined with other pieces of land and apartments over, multifamily, over retail establishments, that I think don't need to be there, but I don't know how to undo or unring that bell unless we hold an abeyance to the Coleman Boulevard, Bensar, or Coleman Bensar Boulevard overlay district. Here again, I'm not saying put it in the, in the dustbin, but I think we need to kind of figure out Coleman Boulevard, the traffic, the density issues, and all those attendant And abeyance, we'll say for, just for clarity, 180 days, and so we can kind of see what we're doing here in terms of impact. And I'll put that in form of motion.
I'll second.
So we have motion and a second. I'll wait for a second. Thank you. So any questions for Mr. Bustos?
I have.
Yes, sir. Mr. Haney?
Thank you. Does this affect residential, but not commercial development?
Right. If someone comes in with a clean commercial development request, I see no reason why that couldn't be considered. But here again, just, it's just these density and traffic issues I think we need to, to address.
So we can build, we can get retail businesses, restaurants, which is retail, but office, any, any economic development can continue. This is just a density address.
Because things that are submitted with apartments on top, just, you know, I don't think the number five that we voted on will fit for those instances, but I think, so that's why number seven exists. Think there are differences.
Mr. Bustos, could you define those differences a little better for me, so that I have a better understanding?
Multifamily developments, while you could consider apartments over retail, I mean, certainly are multifamily, I don't think they would fit under the number five, which I spoke about, of multifamily development, but they would still equate to multifamily along Coleman Boulevard.
Mix versus open.
Uh, yeah, yeah, yeah. You can call it that, yeah.
Mr. Brummer?
I guess I'm just not, I'm not, I'm not clear on the abeyance. Does that mean that the zoning and all of that burps back to pre-urban corridor, or?
Mm-hmm, that's correct.
So all of the residential, it's done residential now, or allows residential to go back to commercial the next six months?
And, and I, you know, and, you know, as a byproduct of, of this, yep, I would, I would say so, because we need commercial.
That just concerns me, knowing that on the Planning Commission, and again, it depends on the product, the project, but generally, commercial projects tend to generate more traffic than residential, so I'm, I'm not sure that that's really a solution to deal with the traffic issue.
Yeah, but as I said, commercial and true economic development we need, and it is my opinion that we've rezoned too much commercial, light industrial, to residential.
And I'm not, I'm not disagreeing with you there. I think we need to take a look at that corridor as well. I've got concerns about the vision of that corridor. I just have concerns about a six-month abeyance, or lifting of that zoning, and then having some discussions and changing it again. I think if we want to take a look at it, that's probably a worthwhile goal, but to, but the whole abeyance thing, to me, I just, I'm wondering how many unintended consequences there's going to be to that sort of, of the strategy. And maybe Kristi Ann can, I don't know if you can speak to that at all, what, what's included within the abeyance for six months?
I'm sorry.
I, I don't want to, yeah, don't, not going to put Kristi Ann to explain my words. We just, we just need to look at, and before we, and, and it's not a moratorium, but we're going to hold the abeyance, and during that, you know, we see projects that come in, and if they look to be good, and they're, they're doing not necessarily what is in the Coleman overlay district, but looks good, commercial, then, you know, we can apply the whole zoning. It's, we just have things along Coleman Boulevard that I think are ill-defined. And, you know, there's, a specific example is the And, you know, there's, a specific example is the, on Chuck Dolly. You know, the family came in and said, hey, we're only going to build forty-four units, but I asked them if they would de-restrict those, the front four acres of that that was zoned for sixteen per acre. And the attorney said, no, we're not going to do that. And when that property is sold, the developer, I will be greatly surprised if he does not come in and say, I want my, I think it came to like ninety-six units. He's going to say, I want that because it's in the overlay. The front half of that is in the overlay district resulting in sixty-four units and then it was rezoned in the back from R1 to R4, which created another number of units. And I fully expect that this body will see the developer come back, not folks who are in here, but when they're sold, they've sold that property and say, I want my ninety-six units. And we'll be hard-pressed to say no.
So just for clarification for me then, what will be different if this passes? What would be different between now and six months? What kind of projects will be denied that wouldn't be denied today or allowed that wouldn't be allowed today?
The ones with a lot of apartments over the retail.
Yes, wait just a second. Mr. Bremer, have you got your questions outside?
For now.
Thank you. Mr. Carrier?
So we haven't mentioned the crab yet. How does this affect the crab in your mind? Because the crab was whole, the whole design of the crab, Coleman Boulevard Revitalization Advisory concept was for mixed use, for developers to be able to have retail, but to actually use the tops of their buildings, the second floors, third floors, for residential. Is that, is that your intent, is to do away with the crab recommendations?
To hold them in the advance, yes.
Got you. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Adams?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I appreciate that. My question, I guess, Joe, taking a look at this in a broad base, I'm not sure what going forward differentiates the Coleman-Ben Sawyer Boulevard overlay in a six-month period than what we've already agreed to as far as a moratorium goes. And then coupled with what's taken place recently with the bids and purchases, rejecting the bids that were on the Coleman revitalization, how that's going to differentiate it by putting this issue in advance?
Well, you know, there are several parts to this though, and of course, the bids that came in so high for Coleman Boulevard is a part of that. I would say that we're not going to be able to do that public part of Coleman Boulevard, we simply don't have the money, goes back to the transportation money situation. Actually, this may be bigger than just holding the design in advance. It may be bigger than that by a great deal. And here again, I think we need to couple this with the whole Coleman Boulevard construction thing because if we can't do our part, I don't know that we can expect anyone else to do their part. And I don't think the money's there to do it.
I don't understand that. Can you explain what you said?
Sure. You know, the whole Coleman Boulevard, Coleman-Ben Sawyer Boulevard overlay district is based on the town doing certain things as town's part, the public part of Coleman Boulevard redevelopment. I think we're finding that we can't do our part, at least not in any, not soon. So I think to do this and have an idea of doing these things concurrently makes sense.
Yes, Mr. Haney?
As a member of the Transportation Committee, and there, this is on there, and correct me if I'm wrong, the details we talked about, about Coleman, I was the lone vote against. Just picking up where we left off when the bids got rejected from, sorry, from that committee. And I don't think we have a handle yet on where all that is going, what the phases will be, when and how we will get the drainage in, whether we will have a divided median, as we had a business owner, what, thirty-five years, Chris, tonight. And so as a member of the Transportation Committee and with so much being in flux there about the future, I think this is a wise planning move. For one thing, it has to do with traffic, for the other, it has to do with density. What square footage, how much is the coverage going to be? How much new impervious surfaces are going to be affecting our drainage? When is that drainage going to get put in? We don't have the answer to that yet. And so to continue on a plan that had counted on all this being approved, going ahead, I'm talking about the roundabout and accompanying drainage, and now because of the bids, that is not going to happen. I think it's unwise to consider moving forward when you don't know where you're going. So that's why I support this motion as a member of the Transportation Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Haney. I was also, obviously, as chairman of the Transportation Committee, I did see the data and we are going to present tonight a motion to move forward with a phased approach. I will very much support the phased approach to Coleman Boulevard because we've talked about how important it is. The drainage is key and we'll have that vote later. But, you know, basically, you're asking for, in my opinion, Mr. Bushak, you're asking for something that we've worked on for almost twenty years now to be indefinitely just put on hold without any rationale or without any legal discussion of ramifications or unintended consequences. So I have a very much time supporting that motion.
Well, I would disagree with you. I think my rationale is very clear. I'd rather take exception to the fact that you say I would speak here with no rationale to what I'm saying. Just disagree.
I understand. Mr. Owens?
Yeah, Joe, is that your intent, is to put this in advance so that we can take a look at this phasing process going forward?
We have a lot of things that can't move with our infrastructure. We have some that can move, and I'm just saying we need to match these things. And we need to make certain that we can move forward or not because, you know, we have zoning based on infrastructure that we may not be able to do. You know, not belabor the subject, but the answer is yes.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Smith?
To our planning chairman, I sit on the planning committee, when, or to Kristi Ann in the planning department, even before it gets to us. So Coleman Boulevard, Ben Sawyer Boulevard overlay districts, any projects that come before us that are not solely commercial-based will not be able to come, will not even be able to be submitted in this motion. Is that your understanding?
I need clarification on a few things as it relates to that. There are a lot of things that come straight to the department or go straight to DRB and they'll come to this body when it comes to that area of town. So I would need clarification on that. And I also would need clarification if this only applies to the Coleman-Ben Sawyer portion of the urban corridor. You've mentioned Chuck Dolly.
No, which would include Chuck Dolly. Which would include Chuck.
And Johnny Dawd.
And Johnny Dawd. Madam Mayor, I am gravely concerned about those unintended consequences for this. I can't even begin to wrap my head around that.
Thank you. I appreciate that comment. Anyone else have any comments or questions for Kristi Ann or the town attorney? Call for the votes. Oh, I'm sorry, I have to speak. Yeah, apologies.
Barry Wolf? Mr. Bagwell?
My name is Jimmy Bagwell, I live at 41 Mississauga. I think Mr. Bushak's rationale is perfect. We have a highway project that was estimated at eleven or twelve million dollars and came in at nineteen or twenty million dollars. We can't build that. I heard in this body a couple of months ago that you could not phase this project in, that it had to be all done at one time. Now it looks like we can phase it. But I think Mr. Bushak is right. I think we need to take a look at what we want to do down there, what we have the money to do, and move forward very, very slowly. Coleman Boulevard's not going anywhere. It's not going to fall apart in the next six months, and I think that we really need to think this thing through and make it right. And another thing, Mr. Bushak is right, we need commercial development also here. I think we've got two very nice commercial developments taking place on Coleman Boulevard right now. One where the fond building of yours used to be, it's going to be a very nice development. Another one over here where the C store was on the corner of Lansing and Coleman, going to be another very nice development. I think that there are commercial developers out there that would love to get a shot at doing something on Coleman Boulevard. We also need jobs on Coleman Boulevard so that people who want to live there will have a place to work. So I support the motion. I think it's a wise direction. Thank you very much.
Glenn Cowden?
Mr. Bagwell just raised my nose.
Sally, would you like to speak on this?
Yeah, I'd like to know what the word "advance" means.
Yes, ma'am, you'll have to, you'll have to do it with proper identification.
Okay. My name is Sarah Jacob. I live at 1152 Village Creek Lane, Mount Pleasant, 29464. And I think the word "advance" is very vague. I'd like to know with the legal term, when "advance" is used, what does that mean legally?
This is typically just a time for public comment. This is typically not a time for question and answer.
Well, then I make my comment that says "advance" is a very vague term, and I would be very hesitant to have my council voting for an "advance" on something. It could as well be an "advance" on the rug.
Thank you, Sarah. Sally, Sarah, Pam. I recognize Mr. Bremer.
I would just like to ask Mr. Paglari what the legal definition of "advance" would be under these.
"Abeyance" means to hold back, essentially means to suspend the existing ordinance.
And so what would be in its place?
Well, at this point, I don't know that anything's in its place. I think it would revert back, well, I don't think of anything in its place.
Okay, so how does that work legally to have property parcels without any zoning?
Well, I mean, the overlay, if I understand it correctly, as mentioned, would revert back to the underlying zoning requirements that we have. While there is a default position, I don't know that there's a replacement. I think those are two different things.
Thank you.
Call for the vote. Oh, I'm sorry.
Well, I was going to answer Sally's question. It just means to hold off on. It doesn't mean to do anything.
It does not mean that. That's what he just told us.
Well, okay.
Roll call, please. Thank you.
Mr. Bremer?
No.
Mr. Bushak?
Yes.
Mr. Bushak votes yes, my apologies. Mr. Carrier?
No.
Mr. Carrier votes no. Mr. Garch is absent. Mr. Haney?
Yes.
Mr. Haney votes yes. Mr. Owens?
Yes.
Mr. Owens votes yes. Mr. Santos is absent. Mr. Smith?
Nay.
Mr. Smith votes no. Mayor Page?
No.
Mayor Page votes no.
Motion fails. Moving on to old business, final reading is first on our list. Kristi Ann? I believe one and two are the same?
They are related to one another, so item one is annexation of some properties along Highway seventeen which are to be incorporated into the planned development for Indigo Square.
Move for approval of the annexation, item number one?
Second.
I have a motion and a second for final reading. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And the guys have it.
Final reading, ordinance number 16020, and ordinance provided the annexation of approximately forty-five, four-two-eight retract of land comprised of three parcels located on U.S. Highway seventeen north and benefited by ten S numbers 5580000154, 5580000157, 558000331. Picked it on a plaque recorded by the Charleston County OMC office in Book AP, page twenty-six, and Book S nine, page three seventeen.
Item number two is a final reading on the First Amendment of the Johnson Development Track relating, I believe, to something that the parking ratio and the height.
Yes, ma'am, I did want to clarify a few things. You did have first reading on this last month, and two issues that were brought forward were to clarify that the building height request only applies to the grocery store and also that the parking ratio that was originally submitted will apply to the entirety of the store. So we have prepared an ordinance that incorporates what you indicated at your last meeting with respect to those, and so that would be incorporated as part of the final reading to provide clarification there. And the other item that came up at your last meeting, that's the old plan, please, that's not it, go backwards. The other item that came up last time was sweetgrass baskets. There was some question about some sweetgrass stands on the property, and what the developer has indicated to staff and actually provided some documentation today is they are going to provide two brand-new stands that will be incorporated up here in this area of the commercial development. The exact location would be determined during the design review process. They actually reported to me today in agreement with the property owners there, that was a commitment, then those stands will be available to those families who are currently on the property, that they're buying the property from. And so that, I think, satisfies that concern that y'all had last time about the stands.
Move for approval with all the recommendations.
As a move for approval, as amended, as stated by the planning director.
Thank you.
So we have motion and a second as stated by our very capable staff in our planning, Mr. Farrell. Yes, sir. Mr. Smith?
I just want to make sure I understood that last part you just said. The two existing sweetgrass basket stands that are there now.
They're kind of tables.
Yep, they're tables. Areas.
Yeah, areas.
They're there now. When this project is completed, there will be new basket areas in that same area constructed by the developer. Is that what I heard you say correctly?
Constructed by the developer to the design standards that you see for our new ones on Highway seventeen.
So they'll be approved, as Farrell said, they'll be approved.
And they will be available to this family.
Where they are currently.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am, I see you in the back, but we're still having discussions. You are signed up to speak, you understand. Mr. Bushak?
To Mrs. Richardson's point, across the street, I think we had discussed that there was not going to be an approval across the street, we were not going to require either developer to move, to do something across the street that was going to impact them?
That was taken care of through the impact assessment approval last month.
Okay.
The modifications to the Weaver Circle area. Y'all specifically directed us to exclude, that had been one of the staff comments from Transportation, who specifically directed us to exclude that comment from the approval as part of the impact assessment.
Good.
Okay, we have some speakers. Ms. Richardson?
Mara Richardson, 2755 Earl Johnson Lane. I'm commenting about the sweetgrass basket stands that are going to be located. I saw a plan today, they're actually planned, no, put in here, two stands here, and I'm not sure if there's a curb path for people to get there. It's tucked behind a tree line, is also around a tree line. It's also around the world and back again to get to it. So it's not actually on the highway. So how would people get to it? And there are some pictures of that area. It's the whole house. The front part of the house is a basket stand. There are one, two, three tables and an additional stand that's standing there. So there are five members that are on that stand. There's another lot that's two lots down, which is the Gould property, which was brown that I know of. There's a basket stand there as well. So when they're going to put two stands there, that's not going to accommodate who all are actually using the stand right now because it's more than two stands that are in that development right there on the Snipe Track and also the Gould Track. And I went through Town Center and I saw your sweetgrass basket pavilion in Town Center. And they're stating that it's not enough room. I walked the area. It's about thirty by thirty. That area is much bigger than that and it can't accommodate at least four stands. You have five people already that are using the stand, existing stand, and the stand that's on the Gould Track, there's one other person. So there's six people using the stand and that's not going to accommodate everybody. So the question is, how will they get to those stands? Is there a curb cut for them to drive off of Highway seventeen to get to the stands? Are they putting a hedge in front of the stand and two huge oak tree on the other side? So it's just going to be basically them sitting there surrounded by trees that no one's going to really be able to see. So if you're not coming into that development and going through a parking lot, swinging back around, you're not going to be able to get to the stand. And nobody's going to take that effort to get to it.
Thank you, Ms. Richardson. That's your two minutes. And I believe our next speaker may be able to address some of this. That would certainly be between the private property owner and the developer to work out.
Ma'am, before she leaves, could we see the pictures you took there just as you're, do you mind leaving us? You made reference to pictures and we didn't see them. That's all I asked. We'll return these to you. I'll pass them down.
Yes, Town Center and the other ones.
Thank you.
Russ Seaman? You're up. Mac, thank you for spending your evening with us. Doesn't this just bring you back to the old days?
I'm the style people, you're not wild card.
You're up soon, I promise.
Thank you all for the opportunity to speak. I do want to say that we did, you know, we put a lot of thought into this. We drove out there. We looked at what was going on. We found two sweetgrass basket areas. And so we proposed two nice new buildings that would replace what are right now kind of open-air. One of them's a picnic table. One of them is kind of some two-by-fours where you could maybe hang some baskets from. So in our mind, we're greatly improving the conditions that are there. We've got more than adequate parking in our parking lot and the curb cut will be there. So, you know, parking will be available for the sweetgrass basket stands. We've located them in green space tucked under some really nice oaks right along Highway seventeen. We're fine with adjusting to the location however we need to and can address that through DRB. I would also like to hand out an agreement that's been signed by nine of the property owners. I've got a couple of copies stating that they're in agreement with this conceptual plan. So I've got four of them, so I'll just kind of pass them along.
Thanks.
Question for Russ.
Where are these property owners in relation?
You have another thirty seconds and then I'll stop your time, Russ, and you can be asked questions.
And they're members of the families of the properties along the frontage that are being purchased. I think that's it.
Okay, so that's it. So you can stay. Your time is done. But if, council might have a few questions. Mark, Mr. Smith, did you have a question of Russ?
I did. He answered the nine names here along the front.
Okay, thank you. I was looking at pictures. Yes, sir. Mr. Carrier?
Yes, Russ. Can you tell us the access off of Seventeenth? Is it, can you pull off in there and get out of traffic? I mean, she's saying if she has to wind her way back through the center, that it's not going to be as effective as just driving off Seventeenth.
Well, I'm not sure that, and Kristi Ann making healthy with this, I'm not sure if DOT would allow us to do any kind of actual improvement along Seventeenth. They would let us just pull right off. We can provide access through our site to the basket stands, though.
And how have they been accessing it before? I mean, have they been off of Seventeenth?
Well, there's residential curb cuts now.
Thank you. I've seen it now. Good. They've seen it as well. You need the pictures? Absolutely. There you go. Oh, there's one more. Okay, so to refresh my memory, we have a motion and a second to approve. Who made the motion to approve?
Yes. Motion.
Motion, okay. So we have a motion and a second to approve. Any other questions? Comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And the ayes have it.
Final reading, ordinance number one six zero two one. An ordinance providing for the First Amendment to the Johnson Development, PDM, US D lane development mixed-use suburban urban district.
Item number three is a final reading of an ordinance to zone neighborhood commercial district, a piece of property on Old Georgetown Road.
Yes, it's located behind Bowen Place and currently zone R1. And so they have, I mean, excuse me, requested neighborhood commercial.
Move for approval.
I have a motion and a second. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And the ayes have it.
Final reading, ordinance number one six zero two four. An ordinance to zone NC neighborhood commercial district, approximately point three-nine acre tract of land located at thirteen seventy-five Old Georgetown Road, identified by TMS number five-five-nine thirteen zero-zero-zero-two-seven, depicted on a plaque recorded by the Charleston County RMC office in Book E, page forty-nine.
Item number four is a final reading of a piece of property, sixteen-point-three acre tract of land on Bell Hall in the Bell Hall Plan Development. It's the retirement community, I believe?
Yes.
Final read.
Second.
I have a motion and a second for final reading. Any questions?
As amended.
As amended?
As amended.
As amended.
And that would include the signage?
Yes, everything.
Thank you. Any other questions for Kristi Ann? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? And the ayes have it.
Final reading, ordinance number one six zero two seven. An ordinance providing for an amendment to the Bell Hall Lane Development District ordinance pertaining to approximately sixteen-point-three-three acre tract of land comprised of two parcels identified by TMS numbers five-four-zero-zero-zero-zero-zero-three-two, five-four-zero-zero-zero-zero-one-zero-zero, depicted on a plaque recorded by the Charleston County RMC office in Book E, page forty-five, and Book E, page two-three-four, pertaining to the commercial development stands.
Item number five is the final reading of an ordinance to amend the zoning court section. This is.
Move for approval.
Thank you. Any questions on this? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? And the ayes have it. Kristi Ann? Who is the second? I thought I did hear one. I'll apologize. So we had a motion. We have no second.
I'll have a second.
Okay, two of motion and a second. Now all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And the ayes have it.
Final reading, ordinance number one six zero two eight. An ordinance to amend zoning code section one fifty-six point two-two-four F of chapter one fifty-six of the Town and Mount Pleasantville ordinances pertaining to replacement requirements for trees, removal of property containers used classified in the supplemental requirements table as other land uses.
Thank you very much. I hate to do this to y'all, but before we move to committee reports, can we have about three minutes?
Can I make a quick motion before we adjourn for, and that was wherever Mr. Burdette is supposed to be on the agenda? Could we move him up to next? No?
No. I'd already asked. We can't amend the, we can only amend the motion when we're approving the agenda at the beginning of the.
Sorry, lady.
I had already asked, Mac. So anyway, just if y'all will, just give us about three minutes while we go through.
That's all we got. We got minutes.
Do you have any flashbacks? All right, guys, let's wrap this up. Come on, guys. Let's finish up. I'm missing Mr. Carrier, so I can't do a accommodations tag. Good for you. Want some lemonade? Sugar, sugar and more sugar.
Did you give me your recognized name before we start committee reports?
Can I?
Quick question.
Absolutely. We can start as soon as Mr. Pagorini gets back. Mr. Carrier? It'd be great. We need Mr. Pagorini before we can move forward. Is he, oh, you're in the back. I'm like, you're looking for you to come in the door. Thank y'all very much for that short break. Before we get started with committed reports, Mr. Rimmer?
Just a clarification question. The moratorium vote passed tonight, does that not include multifamily development on Coleman? And as an extension of that question, does it also, does it include or not include any mixed-use development across the town?
I'm not really sure, Mr. Farrell.
That's why I want clarification.
Mr. Bustos?
Yeah, it says, wealthy families develop apartment complexes. And that's why I said there's a difference between three or four houses on top over retail. And we talked about that. So we're talking multifamily development apartment complexes.
So that would not include any mixed-use, any, any commercial, correct?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. That's why I need to know.
Thank you very much. Moving on to committed reports, accommodations tax. Mr. Carrier?
Yes, ma'am. Madam Mayor and Council, committee did meet and we reviewed the proposed FY sixteen-seventeen accommodations tax budget and recommended it for approvals of budget committee of council. The committee was reminded that Farmers Market is now open every Tuesday and the blessing of the Fleet and Seafood Festival is on Sunday, April twenty-fourth. Next, East Cooper Hospitality Alliance meeting was, is April fourteenth, beginning at four p.m., followed by a networking social from five to seven to celebrate the reopening of Alhambra Hall.
Thank you. Bids and purchases?
Says, Mr. Santos, I believe chairs that meeting, we rejected the bids on the Coleman Boulevard revitalization.
Thank you. That's the only thing you have in your committee? Thank you. Economic development, Mr. Smith?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Item number one, we moved and thank you again to everyone for supporting that initiative for the creation of the fish market at the Mount Pleasant Farmers Market on Coleman Boulevard. Item number two does require action. So if I may please, action is needed to, for council to approve the resolution to extend Mount Pleasant's multi-county park designations to include Hubner's expansion. And the rest of my report, in the interest of time, I'll submit. But I submit that in the form of a motion. Resolution to extend Mount Pleasant's multi-county park designations to include Hubner's expansion.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And the ayes have it.
Here's my written report.
Education Committee report. Mr. Garch is absent and there was no meeting, so there is no report. There's the Economic Development Committee. Finance Committee, there's a lot here, so we'll move right into those.
Mayor and Council Finance Committee did meet in budget review for 2016-seventeen. We went over general and special fund revenues as well as general government, non-departmental and debt fund expenditures. We have four action items for your consideration under New Business, eleven A. These have been reviewed by our outside auditors, Green, Finney, and Horton, who find them to be excellent improvements to the town's financial disclosures. Also, there are two other action items under the New Business category regarding a lease agreement renewal with Tech for their Mount Pleasant campus and rate adjustments for the rental of Alhambra Hall. This concludes my report.
Thank you. Fire Committee?
Yes, ma'am. We met. And just to give you a brief overview, I just want to thank our fire department. They've done a great job, as we've read in the recent news. They extinguished several fires. And Assistant Chief Wagenbrenner does such a great job. Every week he submits a report to us. And just to give you an overview, the fires were twenty-seven. Medical were four fifty-three. Other, two thirty-four, for a total of seven hundred and fourteen. Fire Committee met and request approval to apply for a twenty-sixteen port security grant for sixty-four thousand with a twenty-four thousand four hundred and twenty-five match from the town, which funds are, by the way, available. The total amount for the grants, eighty-five thousand dollars, with the grant providing seventy-five percent and the town promoting twenty-five percent. The grant is to be used for, to purchase, one, two, three, four, five, about ten items. And as such, I place this in the form of a motion.
Second.
I have a motion and a second for approval for the grant. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And the ayes have it. Human Resources?
Yes, we met and discussed budget items. And there's a resolution to amend human resource guidelines that will be taken up in New Business, nine out of five. And that's my report.
Thank you. Patriots Point Development Authority, we did meet and we have the honor of having Mr. Mac Burdette in the house. Mac, this podium is yours.
Thank you. Mayor, members of council, good to see you.
Take as long as you want. You know, we've waited all night, so.
Well, the department managers have this glassy look in their eyes over there. I've seen that often, but not too often. It's kind of what they say, it's time to go.
Always in the interest of the.
I appreciate the consideration offered by Mr. Bustos and apologies by the mayor. But I'm supposed to be home tonight stuffing wedding invitation envelopes, so this is quite okay. I am going to need a note from you, Mayor, to Anne, explaining where I was because she will not believe it.
Hi, Anne.
Thank you for letting me give this opportunity to talk about Patriots Point and the proposed lease with Bennett Hospitality. Most of you know Mike Bennett and giving a comment update as to where that is and what the process is going to be going forward. But first, I want to make sure that in case you don't know or you've forgotten, you know, forty years ago, when Patriots Point Development Authority was established by an act of a General Assembly, it was done so. by, uh, an act of a General Assembly, it was done so that we would, uh, we would be self-sustaining, um, in all respects. And, uh, by and large, we've done a very good job with it. Last time that Patriots Point received an annual appropriation from the General Assembly at that time was that nineteen eighty-six, and it was only three hundred thousand dollars a year. So since then, we've certainly lived off of what we've earned, just like any good business is supposed to do that. But one of the things the General Assembly did back in nineteen seventy-five, when they established the Development Authority, was to provide it with a generous amount of land that could be used to help with sustaining, um, the operation of the Naval Maritime Museum for the state of South Carolina. Uh, and I cannot begin to tell you how many reasons there are that that land is really not developed very much in those forty years. Probably it's a good thing that it hasn't, because I think we're in a better position today to do a better job than we would have been twenty, twenty-five years ago. So we're probably fortunate that, that things didn't work out to develop that property. But, uh, we are in a position now to put forward a, uh, a, a development proposal with what we consider to be a, a partner, and that's Bennett Hospitality. Fourteen, sixteen months ago, uh, we did a nationwide request proposals, trying to find the right developer for Patriots Point. One developer, not, not ten developers that would chop it into pieces, but one developer that could do a great job. We were very fortunate that, uh, Mike Bennett and Bennett Hospitality won the day. Uh, it means a lot in a lot of respects. One, one is, of course, uh, his reputation is, uh, very, very good in this community. Uh, he is a local boy. He still owns the first building he ever bought, uh, when he's twenty-four years old. Uh, he has a stake in the community. Uh, he sees Patriots Point as being a legacy that he'll be able to pass down to his children, and he wants to make sure it's done right. And, uh, also, what, what money comes out of all this and the investments he will make, by and large, will stay in, in the Charleston community and the state of South Carolina, not going to someplace like Dallas or New York or Atlanta. So all that works very good, and we know that we can, we can trust him and he can trust us. Uh, the, the lease is, we're, we can now finally see the finish line on the lease. We've been working on it for fourteen months. And, uh, no offense, Mr. Pagarene, but I've seen the last of lawyers that I wish to see for a while. It's, it's a complicated lease. As a matter of fact, the attorneys in Columbia that work for the state.
This is the lease.
Yeah, State Fiscal Accountability Authority say it's the most complicated lease in the history of the state of South Carolina. Uh, and I have no doubt that's the case. So their attorneys have done a very good job of protecting the interest of, uh, Mr. Bennett, and ours have done a very good job protecting the interest of Patriots Point, the state of South Carolina, and ultimately, the town of Mount Pleasant. Uh, and it's very important at this juncture to make sure that you know that we know that as this process goes forward, and, and there is a process, after our board approves this lease, which hopefully will come very soon, uh, it then has to go to Columbia to be approved by the Joint Bond Review Committee, and then by the State Fiscal Accountability Authority, which is the old Budget Control Board. So there's still a ways to go in this process. But we do hope that all this can, can come to rest sometime around early June, is what, what we hope to have happen. But beyond that, ultimately, before anything can be developed at Patriots Point, uh, Mr. Bennett, and certainly we will be, uh, there with him, because we do own the property. This is a lease of our ninety-nine years. We'll have to go before, uh, the various, uh, committees, commissions, et cetera, of the town of Mount Pleasant to seek approvals for various and sundry parts of what he wishes to do. He, he has proposed through his RFP a mixed use development, and our board has given at least tentative approval of, of the concept of the mixed use development. And if we could, I'm going to switch to that next slide, if you don't mind, Martine. Let's see. And this is a concept. This is a concept plan. Uh, it certainly will change to some extent. I have no doubts about that. Uh, to give you some, uh, orientation here, this is the pier and everything. This is the road that runs, the hotels over here runs across from the top, and the soccer fields and everything are over that way, so we will orientate. That's represents about two-thirds of what the lease will, will, will actually involve. So I'm going to ask you now, Martine, to flip back to the other slide and, uh, let's see, give you an idea of what we're talking about. His lease is, uh, for all the, the pink shaded areas, uh, it's about sixty-one acres of land. Um, and, you know, it's, it's, I think it's very important for everybody to note that, uh, we believe that Patriots Point has done more than its share to establish open space on its property. Uh, we have three hundred acres of land, two hundred of which is open space. And, uh, under various easements and contracts, leases that we have with, uh, various and sundry entities, including the College of Charleston and, and a subset of that, the town of Mount Pleasant, uh, you know, so two-thirds of our property is, is in open space. And we're very proud of that fact, but, uh, what we're talking about doing is it's not even close to be a substantial amount of our property. Um, but you see the pink areas as part of the sixty-one acres. The mass, the, the concept plan that you just saw really pertains just to this area right here. Um, beyond that, there will be other concept plans for parcels two A, two B, three B, and three A, uh, as to time would, would go forward. And again, all of that has to adhere to the rules, regulations, zoning, et cetera of the town of Mount Pleasant. Everyone acknowledges that. And I will tell you this, uh, through our leases and through this particular lease for the Bennett proposal, uh, we do require that the, the developer, in this case, Mr. Bennett, would have to pay a fee in lieu of taxes. Uh, otherwise, there will be no taxes accrued to the town of Mount Pleasant, to the, to the Charleston County or to the Charleston County School Board. We have made sure that that's the case, and that goes back decades, uh, with the town of Mount Pleasant, when we established, uh, a very good working relationship with Patriots Point in, in years past to make sure that when the property did develop, that there will be a fee in lieu of taxes required by the leases of Patriots Point, being state property is not taxable. So, uh, you can be assured you're going to, you're going to benefit for many, many decades to come, assuming all this works out. Uh, it is a ninety-nine-year lease. Uh, it, uh, we think probably a fifteen to seventeen-year build-out of the lease. I can't tell you too many details about the lease, because obviously it's still in a little bit of negotiation. But, uh, it does allow him a two-year due diligence period, because obviously, you know, there's a lot of work to do with the town of Mount Pleasant and Patriots Point still, as to what's going to be developed and how it's going to be done. So we would expect that this development could start, uh, assuming everything is approved, as we hope it will, could start sometime in the next two years. And, uh, the mixed use development we're talking about is hotels, restaurants, offices, shops, uh, stores of various sundry kind. And the only multifamily that the, that the board has told Mr. Bennett that they would approve would be if it was integrated into the overall development, not as a big box standalone apartment. So it could be units above shops and things like that. But, uh, we're not interested in, in developing a multifamily large complex. But certainly, a large office building would be within the vision of Patriots Point, because we would like to see, uh, jobs created here beyond just those that would be in shops and restaurants and bars and hotels and things like that. But, uh, the estimate is that, uh, Mr. Bennett would invest somewhere close to three hundred and fifty to four hundred million dollars at Patriots Point. Uh, that is a, a sizable amount of money. And, uh, uh, it, it certainly, we think, will benefit, uh, everyone, um, in Patriots Point and town of Mount Pleasant, Charleston County. And, uh, I would say too, that, you know, the mayor sits on the Patriots Point Development Authority Board as an ex officio voting member, as all mayors have by stat, state statute. Uh, it's a very peculiar kind of position for any of the mayors to be put in, because from time to time, such as something like this, the, the mayor has his or her responsibilities to the town and his or her responsibilities to Patriots Point as an ex officio voting member. The purpose of putting the mayor on the board, because I remember when it was actually, the law was changed so they would do that, is to make sure that, uh, input was given to the Patriots Point Development Authority Board from the town's perspective. And I can assure you, your mayor does that on a regular basis. And we do it much quicker than the town does it, but we still, she does it. Uh, so be glad to answer any questions about this. Oh, I want to mention one other thing too. Mr. Bennett, did acquire the lease to parcel E. Parcel E was, uh, under lease to a company called Lupert Adler, uh, out of Philadelphia and Atlanta. They hold the lease on the golf course, and he acquired that lease very recently. Uh, and more than likely, he will be looking at, uh, coming and changing zoning on that to a hotel. Uh, right now, I think it allows, Kristiana, you may remember where she, uh, I think it allows condos or something like that, or offices, so, um, so he would be looking to do that. And, uh, there'd be a new lease done on that for, for him on that. Be glad to answer any of your questions.
I just have one for you, Mac. Um, thank you so much for coming tonight, and I don't feel so bad that you sat here knowing you would have been on the hook for stuffing wedding invitations. Can you show us just for a point of reference where the potential medal of honor museum will be placed?
Sure. Uh, keep that same slide up, Martine, if you would. That's the best one. You know what the Coleman Memorial is, right here. Uh, it would be on just the southern, the, the western boundary, the eastern boundary would be along here. It would come to a point here, follow this purple line up and out into this area here, which is, is, it looks like it might be wetlands, but it's really not. And it curves back around to a point somewhere here. So it's about seven point two acres. Uh, more than likely, they're going to be coming back to the Patriots Point Development Authority Board and requesting two additional acres, uh, which, uh, we'd have to work that out with Mr. Bennett, because it probably would be on, let's call it the southwestern side of that pink line right there. Um, but, um, you know, I've had a lot of people say, ah, what if they're ever going to raise the money to make this happen? Well, I'll tell you this. I'm betting my money on General Darwin Simpson, who is the chairman of the Medal of Honor Museum Foundation. Uh, he, you know, if something happened to him, I don't know. But, uh, Darwin Simpson will make it, he'll, he'll get that money. It'll, it'll happen. And, uh, it will be a great addition to our state, our county, our town, and certainly Patriots Point when it happens. I think, my guess is, they, they've said that they think they can start construction within two years. Yeah, I think that's pushing it a good bit, but I would say maybe four years they might be in a position. But that's just me personally. I can't speak for them, because they're a tenant of ours. We have, that's our relationship. We certainly support them and, and do what we can to help them, but they are a tenant, uh, for a dollar a year for ninety-nine years.
And just for clarification, so that's a hundred million dollar project, and Mr. Bennett's potential project is three hundred and fifty, four hundred million. So this is a five hundred million dollar project. So thank you very much for staying with us tonight so that we could see that. Um, questions from the council?
The, the land there, the parcel to the left of two A. Is there any wiggle room for us with the state and us approving all this other stuff or getting it all done for us to have that? I know it's under some sort of a, the left, the green area.
That's called soccer fields.
Well, we're, is, so two A is the wooded area? Okay. And that's what he's already going to be part of?
There will be development there at some point, is, is the vision of his. Understand now, and, and this is really important. I, you know, I, as much as I respect and love this town, my job is to make sure that I carry out the, the charter of the state of South Carolina, Patriots Point, and that's to make sure we can be self-sustaining. And we think in terms of a hundred years, not in five years or twenty-five years, a hundred years. Uh, I've got three seventy-year-old warships that are sitting in saltwater. And we've done a structural and environmental assessment of the York Town, and we're going to need to spend about sixty million dollars on the York Town in twenty years. Uh, and then after that, about every twenty years, we'll spend about twenty million dollars on it. So over the course of a hundred years, you know, we're going to need to spend about three hundred million dollars on the York Town alone. So, uh, you know, all of our land's got to work for us, and, and I'm not, uh, I got kind of hoisted by my own petard, to use a Navy term. Uh, but, uh, I was part of, of working out with council and the mayor at that time the lease for this thirty-six acres right here that is enjoyed by the town of Mount Pleasant Recreation Department and the College of Charleston's, uh, Athletic Department. We get a whopping for thirty-six acres of prime real estate. And you know, if you're in real estate at all, you know what that's worth. You know what that's worth. We get a whopping a hundred and forty-five thousand dollars a year for the next forty-five years for that. Now, I'd say the state of South Carolina.
We can do better than that on two A if you want, if you want.
Well, if you, yeah, Mr. Bennett might be willing to sublease to you, but it's going to be a market value. Because we think we've given away enough land to the Medal of Honor Museum and to the College of Charleston, the town of Mount Pleasant. Uh, we think we've done our part and, and we simply, you know, you as taxpayers, you don't want to have to fund three warships for the next decades. That's not what we want to saddle with, with the taxpayers' estate. That's not the way it's supposed to work. And the land's got to work for Patriots Point. Uh, and certainly, I believe, uh, that, um, from everything I've seen from the past and present, uh, the town understands and appreciates what, what Patriots Point and all the tourists that come there does for the town in terms of, uh, revenue, et cetera. But, uh, right now, about five hundred thousand people a year visit Patriots Point and Spirit Lion Cruises to go to Fort Sucker a year. Five hundred thousand people. Uh, that's a heck of an economic impact on the town. And by and large, it's pretty clean, you know, it's, uh, they don't leave too much behind except for some, some good money. So, uh, we think that it's important to continue that economic development partnership with the town. But more than that, uh, and I heard you speak of demographics earlier, uh, I'll leave you with this, because it is important, it, I think most, I think all of y'all are, are patriotic to a fault. You know, um, the, the word is that within twenty-five years, uh, only five percent of American families will have a living member of the family that actually has ever served in the military. They're all going to be dead. Uh, we're not, we're not building great armies anymore, thank goodness. Uh, and, uh, even the Vietnam veterans will be gone by then, pretty much. So, uh, it's important to have places like Patriots Point. If we're going to make sure that we teach our children and our children's children and so forth down the line the values that we hold so dear about why this is such a great country. That's, uh, certainly, uh, you know, a flowery patriotic kind of speech, but if it's, if it, if that doesn't mean anything, then yeah, we ought to get rid of the ships, develop the land, sell it, be done with. It, it really comes down to those kind of core missions that we have versus, you know, the, the value of the real estate. There's a reason, and only one reason, only one reason, that we need to develop this, this property, and that's to make sure we can sustain the Naval Maritime Museum perpetually. That's it.
Thank you. I see a few questions here. Uh, Mr. Haney, I saw you first. Mr. Smith has a question.
Sure. Just real quickly, it's late and we got votes to do. Does the primary, or, or I could come visit you later, but is the primary way that y'all get there from here is the ground lease, the ninety-nine-year ground lease from Bennett? Is it the cash flow from that? Are there other kickers? Is there participation in certain revenues? Just in a nutshell.
The ground, the ground lease, along with the leases we currently have, we believe that within fifteen years, we'll generate close to six million dollars a year. And we will use that six million dollar year as a capital fund to actually do, to do, to sell bonds and to use that to pay the debt service on the bonds in twenty million dollar increments and pay it back over, you know, five to seven year periods of time and then roll another one over. That's the plan. And we would isolate that money from these leases only for the preservation of the ships and the pier.
Mr. Smith?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, first of all, congratulations to all, a great success, and wish, wish you much luck securing all this. It's, uh, it's certainly going to be, um, a significant economic impact. Uh, the numbers are, are sobering that we're throwing out here. Um, and it should be incredible to have probably seventeen, the, the America's Highway or some kind of freedom highway leading up to this crown jewel of the Medal of Honor Museum, the, as we all know, the only one in the country, and base. Um, my concern that I want to be on the record, uh, again, Madam Mayor, is, um, just the Medal of Honor Museum itself specifically. In the Medal of Honor Museum's own website that's been, uh, promoted, they talk about a hundred and twenty-eight feet, uh, height in the building that they're raising this hundred million dollars for a national fundraising campaign. In fact, Mr. Bagwell and Mr. McQueen were co-sponsors, along with several others, at a Medal of Honor, uh, uh, bowl, uh, event, a gala event. And they showed us this tremendous virtual tour. Um, so we all know exactly what the building looks like. They've over-communicated to us. We know what the intentions are. We know the height of the building. We also see and have heard some significant movement from the community that there will be no exceptions. We have council members, uh, quoted in the paper, that there'll be no exceptions to any height, no ordinance on there. What further concerns me, if I, I've recently learned, Madam Mayor, and, and Mac, maybe you can help me understand this as well, is that the height area at that particular site is not seventy-five feet? It's actually fifty feet?
I don't, there is no zoning on that property, Ms. Farrell, if I'm correct. So they have to come back and get zoning on that property, just like Mr. Bennett will have to do that as well. So you're going to get a cut, mini-cuts, if, if looking at all this.
I just would want to be, again, Madam Mayor, on the record to say that I certainly pray that our town of Mount Pleasant is not humiliated after a hundred million dollar national fundraising effort, when all this information's been communicated to us and we don't allow that, that museum to be built. And I, I, I will be contributing as much as I can from my little stone that I could contribute to that hundred million. I wish I could fund it all, because those folks deserve it.
Well, I know Mr. Simpson, uh, Darwin Simpson. Well, I know Mr. Simpson, Darwin Simpson, respects the town's processes. We've talked about it. He's been a major player in the development of Spartanburg, South Carolina. And he, as a matter of fact, was going to run for mayor a couple of years ago, decided to do this instead. So, he believes in local government and what it's supposed to do and what his role is. And I think you'll find him to be incredibly cooperative with the town as they move forward with their plans. And Patriots Point, again, we're their landlord.
Right.
We support them, but we won't enter into the fray as to whether it ought to be a hundred and twenty-eight feet or eighty-five feet. You know, that's something they're going to have to convince this, well, the design review board potentially or the town council or planning commission what that should be.
And it certainly would not be in the form of a low-country building either. As you're driving over the building, it will not look like anything along the coast. It will stand out like socks on a chicken.
If there, probably if there ever was a building that deserved an iconic look, it may be this one. But I'll leave that to y'all. That's not my role.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you so much for having me, Mary Smith.
Just one more thing. How long ago has it been since any of you have visited Patriots Point?
We've been there all the time.
Okay. I would just suggest Mac has brought in some wonderful new programs. They have, is the virtual reality up now?
Yeah, we will launch our astronomy and 3D virtual RV program probably in about a month. We tested out a bunch of graduate students from Clemson University the other day. No jokes, please, if you don't mind. They went to negotiate through it. But it's a complicated system and it's, so we're having to really do a lot of tests on it to make sure that it works seamlessly.
Well, when you get that finished, please extend a invitation to the council. We'd all love to come out.
I will bring the Oculus goggles to y'all to a council meeting and let y'all try it out right here.
I've done it. I won't do it again. But I certainly want to make sure that the rest of council has the opportunity to fly in orbit virtually. So, thank you very much, Mac.
Thank you for your support. We appreciate everything you do for us all the time and truly, it is a part of us. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And now you can go home to Anne and stuff envelopes.
She waited for you.
Planning Committee, bye. Bless you.
Yes, Mayor. We have one action item and that's a consideration of an ordinance regulating mobile businesses. Last town council meeting, we directed legal to craft an ordinance to regulate the mobile retail vendors in town. The committee unanimously recommended that start proceed with a public hearing process. So, I guess that needs a motion. Is that right?
Yes, sir. That'd be appropriate.
Okay.
And it would go to planning commission.
And do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. I do have one question for Mr. Pagrini. If we have an ordinance, then peddling mobile business is allowed as governed by the ordinance, correct?
You mean based on the draft ordinance that we prepared in committee? Right. It would be permitted with the restrictions in the ordinance.
I'm not sure I understand answering your question.
Well, I just have reservations about the ordinance. I have reservations about encouraging mobile business, being a brick and mortar business with all the hindrances and regulations and rules. We heard it earlier with the seafood market. I still have, I have great reservations about opening a door to mobile vending business. We do have a peddler's law on the book as it speaks. So, I will not be supporting the motion above. So, thank you.
Just for information, this ordinance was based on the mobile food truck ordinance. And so, there are those restrictions and some of those concerns were raised during planning committee as well. And I think they were, for me, and were adequately described and explained.
I was at the meeting. I understand. I still have issues with the ordinance, but thank you. So, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Nay. You have a report. Would you like to submit your reports for them?
I do want to just briefly go through it because these were, some of these items were brought forward, sent back from councils. I'll have to at least address those. In our recent meetings, we've had a consideration of including accessory dwelling units, multifamily units, setbacks permitting in residential densities in the growth management plan. Many of those topics either have been discussed here in this setting or have been deferred when Mr. Santos is also here next month. The committee directed the planning staff to provide information regarding impervious surface limitation in areas with poor drainage. That will be reviewed in May by planning staff. The committee directed staff by a vote of three to one to provide information, recommendations regarding potential increases in impact fees. This will also be reviewed in May and is being reviewed by several other committees as well. Several other motions were put forward and appear under new council business, which we've already addressed. And we did go over the budget, the budget items. And that includes our report.
Appreciate it. Police, legal, judicial, Eric, I'll turn it over to you. We do have a action item.
Thanks, of course, Mayor. There is one action item for council's consideration. I guess the question would be, would you like legal staff to re-craft ordinances that would establish a uniformed appointment policy for boards and commissions?
And I would say yes, and I'd like to make that in the form of a motion.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to establish a uniformed report for policy for boards and commissions. Any discussion, questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Any eyes have it? And our report will submit some budget items. Public Services Committee?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. Public Services Committee did meet. Of course, we went over the budget. We have no action items that require council's action tonight. We'll point you towards when we get to our full budget committee meeting. We commend our director, Jody Peel, for the personnel adjustments she'll see us making that moves us in the right direction and does what's in the best interest of the town in terms of personnel and in terms of our services, this being, of course, a core service of government. Three quick things. One is, we deferred a discussion about the use of single-use plastic bags in town. There is pending legislation in Columbia. We'll be hearing about this down the road. We may not have to take any action depending on what the state does. The second thing is, is that we discussed a request by Eastwood Town Homes to receive garbage and trash pickup. And after getting input from the staff, we decided to do it under the same precedents that had been set. And the third thing is that Wackendall and the Creek subdivision asked us to repair a spillway structure within their community. The water from there, once it leaves, is our issue. It's not our issue about water going in. The committee unanimously directed staff to proceed with making those repairs, but it is below the level to where council does not need to act on that. But I thought you might want to know in case you get a discussion request. And here's my written report.
Thank you. Recreation Committee?
Mayor and council, I am going to have to read some of this because we did have a couple of motions and approvals. We did approve fee waivers for the East Cooper Faith Network and the Wounded Warrior Organization. We did budget review. Part of the budget review, though, we, Councilman Haney motioned for staff to revisit impact fees for recreation and give a report at the next committee meeting. The motion was approved. Deputy Rec Director Steve Gurkic gave an excellent report on synthetic turf fields versus grass. He detailed the pros and cons for both as to initial cost, maintenance, replacement, and usage. Public Services Director Jody Peel assisted in the presentation. Councilman Haney motioned for staff to put together a recommendation for a turf field for the football field at Park West. The motion was approved. Other than that, we had the normal good numbers for our usage of rec facilities. I will say, though, the Mia Hamm camp this past Saturday, Sunday, was terrific. I was out there Sunday and I think a couple of y'all were out there Saturday. But we had a hundred and seventy-five participants and at least that many parents, so it was a big deal. And boy, the kids loved the girls, so it was really nice. The girls were very complimentary of our facilities and especially the grass. They said, "We don't play on grass like this." So, to Jody's credit, the field looked great. They enjoyed it.
Ken said the adults stayed and didn't leave their children.
Yeah, they did.
They were quite enamored with that. Thank you for that report. Transportation, we do have one action item. I'm going to make a motion to defer that. Paul Garch is not--